Go to our C clerk, Wendy Wood.
Councilmember Fan.
Present.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Present.
Councilmember Tua.
Here.
Vice Mayor Montana.
Here.
Mayor Trent.
Here.
Thank you so much Wendy. Next up here we'll go to any announcements before closed session with our attorney Christopher Diaz.
Thank you mayor, just wanted to note for the council and the public that you will be considering five items in closed session. The first is conference with labor negotiators regarding Launa. The second and the third are both involving existing or anticipated litigation regarding the treatment plant. The fourth is existing litigation regarding the Jane versus City of Milpitas matter. And then finally, anticipated litigation which is the fifth matter regarding your agenda item 22, the appeal of the planning commission's decision on the car wash. But thank you.
Thank you very much Chris and we'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session.
Great, thank you everybody, we're back here. Thanks for tuning in folks, if you're watching on Facebook Live or YouTube.com, thanks for tuning into tonight's Mill Peters City Council Meeting on April the 20th. We'll go ahead and get back here to the open meeting, let me check in with our city attorney, Christopher Diaz for any announcements at a close session.
Thank you Mayor Tran, direction was given by the council to staff, but otherwise there was no reportable action, thank you.
Thank you very much Chris. Alright, next up, we're going to the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand as you may.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The United Republic of Canada stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you Mill Peters, thanks for tuning in, we're streaming live on Facebook and YouTube.com. To everybody on the Zoom tonight, welcome from our city staff to our community members, we are all here. On what is an important day for our city and our nation. We'll go ahead with the agenda here, next up, we have the invocation, tonight's invocation is presented by council member Dominguez.
Thank you very much Mayor for the time and this opportunity. It is our pleasure to introduce you to our guest today, who is going to be leading tonight's invocation. She is in Mill Peters, a very strong advocate and my personal she-hero, as I have seen her do a lot of work, in particular, the past couple of months, not only with the AAPI hate movement, but also making sure that we build a strong sisterhood here, not only in Mill Peters in this region. She definitely comes with a lot of experience and she is definitely passionate about healing and making sure that we move forward as one community, so today it is my honor to introduce you to Emerald, who is with us, I believe, on the call, welcome so much Emerald, and you, the mic is all yours, thank you.
Thank you so much for inviting me, it was really unexpected, so thank you. I want to open up with my personal hero, Mother Teresa. Go out into the world today and love the people you meet. Let your presence shine new light in the hearts of people. So Mother Teresa, she is just a trailblazing woman of God, who inspired me to shine my light. So with April being Sexual Assault Awareness Month, I want to share that the way I shine my light, as a survivor of sexual violence, it's been my life's purpose to not only advocate and empower the voices, but facilitate healing for trauma warriors around the world. So I ask everybody in the room and everybody that's listening online and in the community, how will you shine your light? Especially more now than ever during this pandemic era, where unfortunately racism, violence and hate continue to impact the AAPI, black and brown communities, where people, our people are in pain. So it's important for all of us to use our life to be a light, so whether you're in a work, school, or family spaces, to be that light. In the eyes of God, we are all family, so let's take a moment of silence for our brothers, our sisters, our family, who are no longer with us, like George Floyd, Adam Toledo, Dante Wright, Christian Hall, Angelo Quinto, just to name a few. Thank you. And so I wanted to invite you, being the mental health person that I am, to take, do a box breath with me. And so it's four, 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 so we are going to inhale for four, hold for four, and exhale for four. Alright, ready? So, let's inhale. And hold. And exhale. I wanted to do that before we pray, because God, I am so thankful for this blessing, for this gift of our breath and our lungs, and this gift of life, and so this is a prayer how I open up each morning, and so I invite you all to pray with me. God, thank you for these eyes, to help us to see each other in the way that you see us. God, thank you for these ears, so that we are able to listen to one another. God, thank you for our voices, so that we can be a source of empowerment to those around us. God, continue to guide us with your wisdom on how to be a service to our family, this community, because we are all family, so let's continue to love, support, empower, and serve as we are called to do. And let me just say that I am so grateful, especially in times like this, it makes me so grateful to look at this room, to see a bunch of passionate leaders who are so beautifully diverse, of men and women at the table, that are being represented. Because I know, especially this coming year, especially this year, as I've gone to know some of you, that you do truly have our best interests at heart, and that makes me feel really safe, so thank you.
Thank you so much Emerald for your words and for the invocation, that really reminds us to come from a place of love in all of our actions. And with that, our invocation ceremony has concluded, thank you so much Mayor for the time, thank you Emerald for being with us.
Thank you Emerald. Take care, alright. Okay, moving on here to presentations, we've got a handful of presentations here this evening, I'll go ahead and go through them. First up is Earth Day. As we continue to live through this pandemic, we are reminded of the extraordinary importance of maintaining a clean and very healthy environment, especially in Mill Peters. This year marks the 51st anniversary folks, 51 years of the Earth Day Movement. Cities around the world are leading the way and developing innovative plans to drive climate action and resiliency. And I'm proud to say, Mill Peters is doing its part in this fight. We're implementing a citywide energy and water savings program, that will make all city facilities and infrastructure more sustainable. In addition, we are in the process of updating the city's climate action plan, super exciting, which will serve as our roadmap towards carbon neutrality. The city of Mill Peters is also coordinating multiple activities to educate our community on the impacts of climate change, and to empower mill patients, each and every person to lead healthier and more sustainable lives. We have virtual events for kids and adults on April 22nd, Earth Day. Also my mother's birthday. I'll always remember Earth Day for that, as well as opportunities residents to show off your new sustainable habits, to earn prizes on social media. For those who are busy, we've made it easy for you to binge-watch a cool playlist of educational videos whenever you can, on our Sustainable Mill Peters YouTube channel folks. Just search for Earth Day 2021 on the city's website for more info, how about that huh? Earth Day is an annual reminder of the constant need for environmental activism, stewardship commitments, and sustainability efforts on a global, local, and individual level. And we need everyone to join in and do their part to bring forth a strong green Mill Peters economy and future. All interrelated, therefore I, Rich Tran, the mayor of Mill Peters, on behalf of the great Mill Peters City Council, hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2021 as Earth Day. Okay fantastic, moving on, another proclamation, we're gonna go ahead and say this, Affordable Housing and Building Safety Month. Really two areas that our city excels in. During this global pandemic, the importance of a safe, stable, and affordable home has become more crucial now than ever, you're telling me. Regionally, May is recognized as Affordable Housing Month by Silicon Valley at Home, with the theme, Silicon Valley is Home. This year to pay homage to our community, where we want all our neighbors to have access to a secure, safe, and affordable home. Nationally, let me tell you, May 2021 is celebrated as the 41st Annual Building Safety Month by the International Code Council, with the theme, Prevent, Prepare, Protect, that's three Ps, building codes save. To recognize that our community strength really depends on the safety and economic value of the homes and buildings that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of disaster. To commemorate this month, where it looks like we're moving a little advanced of it, but that's okay, better early than late. To commemorate that month, the city is partnering with nonprofit agencies to bring virtual events to our community, to raise awareness and engage our Mill Peters citizens. The city of Mill Peters is strongly committed to affordable housing, yes we are, and building safety. Therefore I, Rich Tran, Mayor of Mill Peters, on behalf of the great city council, proclaim the month of May, might as well get started, that's how good we are, as Affordable Housing and Building and Safety Month. Shout out to our Building Safety and Housing Department, we really appreciate the work you do. Alright, we're gonna keep it going here, Autism Acceptance Month, shout out to the Mill Peters family. Autism, also known as Autism Spectrum Disorder, is a developmental disability that can cause significant social communication and behavioral challenges. People with ASD may communicate, interact, behave, and learn in ways that are different. The learning, thinking, and problem-solving abilities of people with ASD can range from gifted to very, very severely challenged. Some people with ASD need a lot of help in their daily lives. But early diagnosis with the appropriate education and intervention can help the future growth and development of each individual. A comprehensive collaborative approach will help to advance research and provide a better understanding of the many forms of autism, while strengthening advocacy efforts and ensuring access to services and resources. Each year during this month of April, people across the globe take time to recognize the billions of people living with ASD, including our family members here in Mill Peters, by promoting awareness, acceptance, and inclusion for all. Therefore I, Rich Tran, on behalf of the great city council here, do by proclaim the month of April 2021 as Autism Acceptance Month, and we think about those in our lives, our family members, friends and neighbors here in Mill Peters. Alright, last, lastly, we're going to recognize Parkinson's Awareness Month. Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease that is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States. The symptoms of Parkinson's disease vary from person to person, and can include tremors, slowness of movement and rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. Education and activities can help increase acceptance for those with Parkinson's disease and their loved ones. It also provides confidence, knowledge, awareness, and empowering community. Increased research, education, and community support services are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease here today in Mill Peters. Therefore I, Mayor Rich Tran, on behalf of the great Mill Peters City Council, proclaim the month of April 2021 as Parkinson's Awareness Month, and we give our full support to our community members. I want to conclude my presentation here by thanking our city staff for always preparing the proclamations and commendations and arranging for these to be done successfully, and with care and pride for our communities, I want to thank our our city staff that works on the presentations, you know who you are. Okay, we're gonna keep it going here to the public forum. We got a lot of items here tonight. Okay, we're gonna keep it going here to the public forum. We got a lot of items here tonight, and we started a little late here out the gate of the closed session, okay? So I'm gonna keep comments to two minutes tonight, folks. Two minutes across the board, and let's go to public forum. Welcome our attendees. First up, Voltaire Montemayor with the virtual raised hand on.
Hello, this is Voltaire Montemayor. Oh, I have the background. Anyway, I can't, I have my other one in the other room. Oh, this would be a tongue twister in my case. I scribbled some notes. Thank you for the proclamation, Mayor. Plus four plus one, and then vocation, all good, very good. And it's concerning, touching, I'm touched deeply. I'm re-inspired. Well, the COVID nineteen, yes, we are now reopening, we are revival, you may say rejuvenate. Indoor church, we do mass in the church now, bowling lanes will be open. We have to re-motivate ourselves. Anyway, we just got to follow the health rules in the stores. We should not be, should not get embarrassed, we should not get upset for the day. It's all for our health, it's for all the people of Milpitas especially, and thank you. Did they hear two minutes? I got one minute. I, Ross, thank you.
Very much, Monte Mayor, hope all is well with you. It's the public forum here, folks, on April the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. We are at it here at the regular city council meeting with a very, very interesting agenda for the evening, and we are doing public forum here. Next up, we have Emerald Rubio. I see your virtual raised hand. Yes, welcome.
Alright. Hi, it's me again. I just want to amplify that this Sunday, we are going to be holding a San Jose Stop Asian Hate Community Rally, April twenty-fifth from one to three in Plaza de Cesar Chavez, and it's being led by Adam J., the lawyer. And so, we are so great when it comes to building that community, and so we just wanna unite across all colors and backgrounds and amplify the voices of our community so that we can create change together. And so, I hope that I can see all of your beautiful faces there, including everybody on the screen. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. You heard it, folks. There is announcement, it's going down this weekend. Alright, contact Emerald for more information. Great. Okay, anybody else for the public forum? I do see a list of attendees, a lot of familiar names. I miss all your faces. Alright, here's a person. Here, John, how you doing? And okay, yes, welcome, welcome, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor. On behalf of Agenda Item twenty-five, should I wait until that comes up?
Of course, I think it's always great to comment during the item.
Let's do that then, Mr. Tran, thank you.
Thank you, our City Commission Chair, Arts Commission Chair Ag, thank you very much, alright. Anybody else here for the public forum? Now's the time. Okay, well, thanks for being here with us tonight. There'll be more opportunities later to comment. Moving on here to announcements and future agenda items. With any announcements, let's go to our city manager, Steve McCaris.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Tran, members of the city council. I have four brief announcements this evening. First, consistent with the mayor's proclamation for Earth Day, we're hosting a climate reality presentation this coming Thursday, April twenty-second at six P M. We encourage everyone to join and learn about modeling the effects of climate-conscious behavior and policymaking. You can register to participate by following the link on the Earth Day page on the city's website. Second is our planning and our economic development departments have teamed together in hosting the first of three virtual community conversations. This is related to the revitalization of Main Street in Milpitas. The first conversation will be next Thursday, April twenty-ninth at six P M. That will be focused on business and economic development. The next conversation will be in May, that will focus on issues and opportunities related to housing. And then the third conversation will be in June, which will focus on historic resources. You can participate by registering for any of these events on our city's webpage. Everyone is invited to participate, and simultaneous translation will be provided, both Spanish and Vietnamese. Next up, I'm extremely happy to announce Milpitas, Milpitas' first Santa Clara County mobile vaccination site will be at the Milpitas Sports Center. Supported by our Recreation and Community Services Department, the new vaccination site will provide five hundred vaccinations on Wednesday, April twenty-eighth, in an all-day vaccination clinic. The site is run by Santa Clara County and is primarily walk-up. However, one hundred vaccines will be reserved for at-risk and most vulnerable residents who are being coordinated through our Recreation Community Services, Social Services staff, and our nonprofit community partners. Additional site dates and locations are also being discussed, and those dates will be made available soon. And lastly, I want to remind everyone that our community budget survey is still open. We encourage everyone who has not been, or has not had a chance to take the Milpitas Budget Challenge, to visit the city's website and follow the link we've provided. The survey closes on April thirtieth. Your feedback will be submitted to the city council to help guide our annual budget development process as part of the May eleventh Budget Study Session. So with that, that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you very much, our city manager, Steve McCaris. I'm in good spirits, even though there's a lot going on in the world, I'm very happy to hear these announcements, Steve. Thank you so much. And I know there's a lot of great work being done across the city by all our employees and directors and chiefs, so thank you, everybody. Yeah, I just kinda wanna follow up with what our city manager said with the vaccinations. I know our city really shifted from doing the COVID test to, you know, really being a part of the vaccination process. And so I'm excited to see how that will really make a positive impact for our community. And I wanna remind folks, if you haven't already, folks at home, YouTube or Facebook or wherever you're watching on Zoom, you know, I encourage folks to get your vaccine. We did a little poll, I think at the last meeting, a majority of the council has been vaccinated for the COVID nineteen vaccination. And so, I think the next day I had an appointment and I joined over half of the United States Americans, yeah, or over a hundred thousand Americans, at least getting vaccinated and hey, the numbers are down and let's keep doing our part, business will be back and you know, however folks feel, the governor did say June fifteenth, so I'm just really proud of this aspect of our world right now. In terms of a future agenda item, I do wanna request one. I believe the vice mayor had brought this up a while ago. I just, maybe I'm just following up or repeating what the vice mayor said or not sure where we're at, but I was contacted by a local workers group, I think the grocery workers union perhaps, not sure what their official title is, but they reached out to me and I took a phone call and I would like to see emergency grocery worker pay. I can send more information from the representative I spoke with, but I'd like to see that agendized almost as an emergency, temporary emergency type of item. I don't know how much longer, you know, they'll be considered kind of an emergency workers pandemic era here, but I would love to see this policy agendized for larger corporations, very larger corporations, not the small businesses, for emergency grocery worker pay. And so, I think folks may be familiar with it. But if there's any opposition, let me know, but if not, I'll send over more information to have it agendized appropriately for the next meetings. City manager, thank you. Alright, I see virtual raised hands here, let's keep it going. Next up here, we have council member Chua on the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. I have like three tonight. One is the Youth Advisory Commission is so excited, they've been working hard on this, this is their first event. It is tomorrow, it's mental health, and this is the flyer, and stop as well, the last one for for the Youth Advisory Commission, they've been busy and very helpful to the commission. So I congratulate our young ones, so it will be tomorrow, five to six P M, I assume. Thank you. The next one is, oh, Potty Water is, has has an opportunity for low-income seniors and, and for, to reduce their property tax. There is an exemption for sixty-five and older if the household is not making more than sixty, sixty thousand, three hundred and thirty. Please, please take a hold of this number. You can inquire and then send an email. You only have to apply once, because this, the orders approve the Safe Clean Water and Natural Flood Protection Program, and this will go on until two thousand and twenty-eight. So if you apply and you qualify, it will reduce your special parcel tax of at least sixty, sixty dollars. So I'm asking the city manager through our social media to please reach out to our residents and hopefully, and hopefully help them through our CIO. That would help. Thank you so much. That's for Steve. And my next one is, this is for a task list, I would like to to have a presentation from our, whoever in the executive team. And I'm concerned about our city's preparedness against cybercrime. So I think this will be, this will be in a closed session. We would like to see where we at.
An update, yeah, 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 it's a real thing, yes, cybercrimes.
Yes, because, because there's like eighty-four billion dollars being being hacked, and so I'm concerned about that. It should be under closed session. And that should be done fairly soon. Thank you, Steve. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you so much, council member Chua. Yeah, all really great items, thank you. And I do wanna follow up by saying our I T department is really second to none, especially here in Silicon Valley. And we've taken measures and steps in the past to protect ourselves against cybercrime. And so, it's a changing thing every day, and so it's always great to get an update. Thank you. I would like an update. Okay, next up with the virtual raised hand in the queue, council member Fan.
Thank you. I'd like for us to consider adopting an ADA plan as part of our C I P discussions. Really what I'd like to see is for, you know, our sidewalks and our public infrastructure to be earmarked, and that way we can have legal protection and really also ensure that folks under ADA have the adequate necessities.
I like that. I support that a hundred percent, absolutely. We get an update from staff, I know that's something we've been doing for decades, but let's touch on council member Fan's proposal here, I like that a lot. Great, okay. Thank you very much, council member Fan. Next up, we have Vice Mayor Carmen Montano.
Thank you, Mayor. I like Anthony's proposal to look to increase the ADA and also to do a citywide, I guess, inspection for any liabilities that might happen, accidents, that would be great. So I wanted to bring up mini libraries. A while back, I had asked staff to look into how can we put up mini libraries, and those are really great vehicles for, to increase literacy with children, to close the achievement gap. And so, staff came up with some literature and the city of San Diego is, I guess they have some type of plan and staff is looking into that. But I'd like to have some mini libraries in the low-income areas of the city. And the city is also going to be putting something up on the website regarding mini libraries. So thank you, staff. Earth Day cleanups, I know Earth Day is just a couple of more days, and it would have been nice to have an Earth Day cleanup, maybe when we get out of COVID, we can, our Recreation Department can coordinate that. So I'd like that to happen in the future. And also, I serve on the Valley Water Commission, and there's been some conversations about increasing the water rates, and I was very adamant against it because people are still, some people still don't have a job, and I think there were twelve of us on that commission that voted against any type of tax increase. So I'm hoping that perhaps we can write a letter to Valley Water with the consensus of the council and, you know, strongly opposing a tax increase or something to that effect. And the other thing I have is, I also serve on the Valley Transportation Authority, and they have a bicycle, like a bike-a-thon, so that'll be next month. And I think it's called a Bike to Anywhere. So that brought up, I think, you know, we should have something like that in our city. I mean, not now, but in the future, start planning for the future, have a bike-a-thon event in the city. I think that would be really great, bring the community together. And I think that's it that I have, so those are some ideas that I have. And since we don't, we used to have a bicycle transportation commission, but we no longer have that. So I'm asking if we can somehow incorporate that into some other commission, maybe this the Transportation Subcommittee, I'm not sure, but if staff can brainstorm, think of ideas how we can get that bicycle commission or folks that are interested in bicycle, the bicycle agenda, to get that on, somehow incorporate that into our city guidelines or so forth. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I would love to see your books idea go to the commission, the city commission, and then the bicycle idea go Parks and Recreation Commission. And that way, we, our resident commissioners can deliberate it there. Let's put those two items there, if I may request, and then your letter against the water rate increase. Yes, thank you. Yeah, that's great. And we'll keep all those items moving forward. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Okay, great. Except here, council member Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor, for the time. At this time, I would like to kindly ask the consideration and support of this council in order to bring back an item that has been brought to my attention, not only by advocates here in our region, but an issue that is constantly growing, and Milpitas is definitely not one that is not seeing that. And so I would like to talk about a policy that would make human trafficking awareness training a model, which the Santa Clara County Valley Transit Authority has one in place. So we would be able to model that program and talk about a partnership with our hospitality and hotel workers in order to move that into either a mandatory or definitely work into a collaboration. So I definitely want to have your guys' input, but again, we can't talk about it here. So I would like to see a policy in Milpitas that would make human trafficking awareness training mandatory in our hospitality industry. I think it's really, really important, especially as we are the last stop for that transportation hub, and we are seeing these numbers increase. And so, at this time, I would love your support in order to bring that policy idea forward and have a discussion and an action on it.
Thank you very much, council member Dominguez. I really support the cause. Checking with our city attorney, is that legally possible for a jurisdiction to mandate that sort of training for a particular business industry?
Yeah, I haven't seen the policy itself from V T A, if that's who has it, or Valley Water, but we're happy to take a look at it and advise the council.
Okay, great. Well, yeah, council member Dominguez, just go ahead and send that over, that policy you have, send it over to our city attorney, and if it's legal, there's no opposition to that. I mean, this is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, go ahead and add it onto the list, and then, Chris, if there's something that is illegal or not able to, then we could bring it back at the council discussion and let you guys know. I think that would be the most appropriate way to make sure that this continues moving forward, if that's okay with you.
Let's not jump too far ahead. Let's not jump too too far ahead here. Let's make sure it's vetted by our legal representation. And then if so, then we can place it on the list like all other items.
May I ask a point of clarification?
Yes.
Thank you. Are all other items vetted? So are all ideas vetted through our city attorney when they're presented upon council?
If there's questions on the legality, we don't want to formalize or document any type of effort that is is not you know, that may be unlawful. And so we want to make sure that we're doing good work here. So that is concern with your item.
Was for our city attorney, without due respect.
What I could do, Mayor, is once I see the policy, assuming it is legal, we can just work through the city manager, add it to the list, and then council can prioritize it from there.
Oh, thank you so much. There we go.
That sounds great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, that's it with the announcements and future gen items. Moving on here, announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contribution, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. And I apologize, I disappeared for a minute. I was got stuck on different computers and one went out. So but I'm back. So at this time, I'd ask the mayor and council to please disclose any personal or financial interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda. And we'll start at the end with Councilmember Fan.
None.
Thank you, Councilmember Dominguez.
None.
Thank you, Councilmember Chua.
None.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Montana.
None.
Thank you, and Mayor Tran.
None.
The record reflect none to the first question, and I'd also ask the mayor and council to please disclose any campaign contributions of one hundred or more received within the last twelve months from any of the parties entering into a contract with the city on tonight's agenda or any development project applicant on tonight's agenda. Councilmember Fan?
None.
Thank you, Councilmember Dominguez.
None.
Thank you, Councilmember Chua.
None.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Montana.
None.
Thank you, and Mayor Tran.
None.
Let the record reflect none to both questions.
Thank you very much, Chris, and please, if you may, help us here.
Thank you, Mayor. So Milpita City Council Code of Conduct, be respectful and courteous, words, tone, and body language matter. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the council dais. And again, that includes the Zoom platform we're on tonight. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration, and then finally, the council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. I appreciate it. And moving on here to approval of agenda. Approval of this agenda, I do want to know item number twenty two. Continuation for April, pardon me, continuation for May the fourth. It's gonna be May, folks, May the fourth, okay? And so as we approve this agenda, that's a note for item number twenty two as a state on the agenda. That item has been for continuation to, it's gonna be May the fourth. Okay. All right. And so I'll move to approve the agenda. With that being said, looking for a second.
Okay.
We have a second, but.
Before.
Okay, Vice Mayor, if you could lower your virtual raised hand. That's why I did missing folks.
All right.
Okay, and Councilmember Dominguez, did you have your hand up or?
Yes, I I did have a question before moving the agenda forward. I wanted to see if we could bring up, I believe, item. I forgot the number, I'm working on it. Our item forward, because it's been on the list since February twelfth. And so I don't know how up the list we could bring it up, so we can just make sure that we address it, and it doesn't get too late in order for us to review. And this is for item number twenty nine.
Item number twenty nine, okay. Um, let's see here. Sure, let's bring it up right after the public hearing. So we'll place it right after twenty four.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great, okay.
I'm glad. Reconfirm the motion so that we all have the same language down.
Okay, great. Not too much action tonight here. So for approval of agenda, item number twenty two, as noted on the agenda, has been continued on to postponed on however you see it. It's gonna be May, May the fourth, okay? And item number twenty nine, we're gonna move it up. We're gonna move it up right after the public hearings.
Second.
I read a second by Councilmember Chua, favorite virtual call Councilmember Fan.
Hi.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Hi.
Councilmember Chua.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Montana.
Hi.
And myself is an I. The agenda has been approved. Moving on to consent calendar. I would like to see item number twenty eight and thirty on consent routine business. Typically, I would look for more items for consent, but a really healthy number of items for discussion tonight. Any more requests for the consent calendar, looking to my colleagues, any further virtual raised hands? Councilmember Chua.
I just want to comment on on consent eighteen if I have.
Yes, you may. Yes, you may.
Right now, Mayor?
Yes, please, 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 please.
Okay. Hmm, a couple of months ago, I reached out to our a handful of our local. Oh, yeah, a handful of our local businesses to to support an emergency and emergency hotel stays. And at least four or five of them responded, and I want to thank them for for I want to thank these businesses and their executive management who demonstrated their care for our Milpitas and House and their the Robson Homes, AG Consulting, Overtone More Properties, and Stratford School. I also want to do a shout out to our Assistant City Manager Ashwini and our City Attorney Chris Diaz for making my proposal implementable and legally compliant. Thank you all. Thank you. Great job.
Oh, thank you so much, Councilmember Chua. Wow. Thank you. Thank you for.
Oh, by the way, I forgot. Well, my goal was ten thousand dollars for this hotel vouchers. I actually, as of today, we have ten thousand five hundred.
Amazing, amazing. I'm getting teary eyed here. You can't tell, but it's not the light. It's it's your voice right now. My eyes are tearing. Okay, thanks. All right, consent calendar, no any further requests. I put two of them on there. I'll repeat it one more time for good measure. Item number twenty eight and item number thirty on the consent. Looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I wanted to.
Vice Mayor, yes, please. I'm sorry.
I wanted to discuss or pull C threes and C four, but it's not really, it's not a lengthy discussion. So should I ask now or?
I mean, if you have a few comments, very briefly, very briefly, then, you know, but if you if you if you're requiring for information from staff, we'll have to pull them. I don't think there will be a short answer.
Okay, C three, C four, pull C three, C four, and the other one was the parking for the hotels.
Okay, what number? I'm gonna need the number there.
City manager, do you remember what that is?
It doesn't need to be pulled. It is not on the consent.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, that's a different one. Yeah. Oh, that was those two.
Vice Mayor has pulled items C three and C four. I've added number twenty eight and thirty, two on, two off. And I'll move to approve the consent calendar. Looking for a second.
Okay.
You have a second by Councilmember Dominguez, all in favor of virtual call Councilmember Fan.
Hi.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Hi.
Councilmember Chua.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Montana.
Hi.
Myself is an I. The consent calendar has been approved. Item C three and pardon me, items three and four no longer sees, huh? Items three and four will be moved towards the end per usual protocol. All right, let's keep it moving. Thanks, everybody. We're gonna keep it moving. Item number twenty three, let's conduct the public hearing and introduce ordinance for two oh nine point five amending section eleven fifteen hyphen four point three, duties and responsibilities of the Flood Plane Administrator of Chapter Fifteen, Title Eleven of Milpita's Municipal Code. And we do have our city staff here. I'll go ahead and move to open the public hearing, looking for a second. Come on.
Second.
We have a second by the Vice Mayor, all in favor of opening the public hearing. Virtual roll call Councilmember Fan.
Hi.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Hi.
Councilmember Chua.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Montana.
Hi.
Myself is an I. The public hearing is now open. Let's go to our city staff. And I believe we have our Director of Engineering, Mr. Steve Erickson for this item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This item is to conduct a public hearing regarding a proposed minor change to the city's Flood Plane Management Regulations Ordinance, which is included in Chapter Fifteen of the city's municipal code. Certain areas of the city Milpitas have been designated by the Federal Emergency Management Agency as areas of special flood hazard. And development within these areas is governed by the National Flood Insurance Program Flood Plane Management Regulations. NFIP. The city was accepted for participation in the NFIP and the Community Rating Service Program back in October of nineteen ninety one. These programs provide lower cost flood insurance to Milpita's residents living within the FEMA designated special flood hazard areas. Participation in the program require the city to enforce FEMA's Flood Plane Development Regulations that require the adoption of our own Flood Plane Management Ordinance. Were to complete public outreach tasks informing residents of the dangers of flooding and improve our storm drain systems to prevent flooding. FEMA recently reviewed our Flood Plane Ordinance as part of their five-year audit process and determined that Section XI dash fifteen dash four point three Duties and Responsibilities of Flood Plane Administrator requires a minor change to ensure compliance with Title Forty Four Code of Federal Regulations, Parts Fifty Nine and Sixty. The proposed minor change to this section of the ordinance would require applicant applicants to submit hydrologic and hydraulic engineering analyses to the city to support permit applications would also be required to submit these analyses to FEMA so that FEMA can maintain and update their flood insurance rate maps when the analyses indicate a change in the base flood elevation or the flood hazard area boundaries or a floodway designation. And such submission would be required within six months of the data becoming available. Staff agrees with this this change, and the recommendation is to conduct the public hearing. City Attorney would read aloud the ordinance number two oh nine point five and then move to wave the first reading beyond the title and introduce ordinance number two oh nine point five amending section XI dash fifteen dash four point three Duties and Responsibilities of the Flood Plane Administrator of Chapter Fifteen, Title XI of the Municipal Code. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Erickson. It's our Director of Engineering, folks. Always great to have him on item here. Let's go to the public comment here. First up, we have Voltaire Montemayor, welcome. We're taking public comments here. It is a public hearing. Alrighty, Voltaire Montemayor, I see your virtual raised hand and microphone.
Oh, I found I'm muted now. Okay, this is Voltaire Montemayor. Anyway, I heard the word flood hazard from the engineer. Eh, it's probable, and we will be hopeless if it happens, like if there's high tide at the bay. And then we have a continuous rain downpour, then we will be hopeless. We may need amphibians, we may need boats. I hope there will be not a mass property damage and no whole problem and emergencies. That's all my concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, all right. I don't see any further virtual raised hands. Let's go to the Vice Mayor with the virtual raised hand from the virtual dais, Vice Mayor Carmen Montana.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. A few questions. So I noticed that storm drains, that one of the tasks is for the city to improve their storm drains, storm drain systems. But as I drive around town, I see a lot of storm drains that are clogged up with a lot of debris. And I'm just wondering if if our if that storm drain system, is there like, do you clean them out every? How do you designate or how do you pinpoint areas that? Well, how do you inspect the whole area, the whole city that needs storm drains? Because a lot of them are are clogged up.
Well, so there's two actually areas of I guess I would say FEMA requirements were for storm drains. One, we have to improve them, so that falls on engineering to actually complete projects. You know, either upsize storm drains or repair those that are that are broken or damaged from age. The other piece is the ongoing maintenance, which is an annual practice that the Public Works Department would would complete. So I would defer to Tony and the Public Works Director to speak on the maintenance piece of it. But for again, projects or capital projects to repair and upgrade storm drains, some of those are also identified in the city's Storm Water Master Plan. To indicate reaches of of pipelines that maybe are deficient either through through age or through size, or development has taken place further upstream, and now the pipe needs to be, you know, enlarged.
Don't add on. We also have our street sweeping. Uh, that's all.
Which is good.
Yeah.
So the storm, the storm water master plan. Is there a, because I've been, you know, I serve on different water agencies, and there's been talk of capturing that storm water because of, you know, droughts and so forth. So I'm wondering if our storm, storm drain, storm water master plan includes that, or is that something that's too far fetched?
Well, state law now requires development for a thousand acres that they are required to retain most of that storm water on site. And so that's the bio-swell systems that from the city. So.
That's a good, a good thing. Okay, great. And then so Public Works is in charge of the clogged up storm race. So the other question I have, two more questions. The infill, I know when some projects are developers or developments are being developed buildings, homes, whatever, it you put infill in there, does that infill get rid of the a flood plane on the map?
No, it doesn't get rid of the flood plane. It raises the new structure above the the base flood elevation, which is the elevation of the water surface of an anticipated flood. So it basically removes the structure from the flood hazard.
So does that mean that the the owner of that new development doesn't have to pay flood insurance?
Yes.
If it has infill?
That is my understanding. If the structure is determined to be outside or or say flood flood proofed, that yes, they wouldn't have to pay the flood insurance. That's my understanding.
And and you guys let FEMA know which areas are have infill, so that way
That's correct.
It won't be on that map, which goes, which I'm also going back to the the map has blue, light blue and blue. So can you explain what that means of why the light blue and the blue?
So to answer your first question, any any development where there's fill to remove the structure or the property from the flood hazard, that's a FEMA document that is completed by the developer's engineer. And then that document is submitted to FEMA through the city of Milpitas.
I'm glad you're enlightening me. I this is, I find this all fascinating. So thank you for that. You know, the more the more we know about the details, the better decisions we can make, you know, just we we it's it's a it's a you learn a lot, and it's really good for us to be informed. So I appreciate that.
Sure. Then your second question was the the attachment that was included in the agenda packet shows the the areas of of special flood hazard within the city. uh shows the the areas of of special flood hazard within the city that are that are mapped by FEMA. So there's looks like three different colors. There, I don't include all the de- all the details, but they're just the different uh hazard zones as identified by FEMA. Um, difference might be water surface, the depth uh in some cases.
Yeah, so that's why you have the
They're all different colors. They're all flood hazard. It's just in the zones are differentiated uh by depth or the type of flow.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll I'll move to close the public hearing, looking for a second to close the public hearing.
Okay.
We have a second. My councilmember Dominguez, all in favor of virtual call, Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua, maybe she stepped away for a minute. Vice Mayor Montano.
Aye.
Myself is an I, the public hearing has now been closed. Um, if there's no further comment, uh, just really strong policy work here to protect our city uh here moving forward with floods. Um, we'll go to our city attorney for some assistance.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. Uh, what you have before you is ordinance number two zero nine point five, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Milpitas, amending section eleven dash fifteen dash four point three duties and responsibilities of the floodplain administrator of chapter fifteen of Title eleven of the Milpitas Municipal Code. And we'd be looking for a motion to introduce the ordinance and wait for the reading beyond the title.
So I'll move it. Alright, I got a second, I'll second. Oh, yeah, I got. Alright, we got a motion by Vice Mayor Montana. We have a second by Councilmember Chua, all in favor of virtual roll call, Councilmember uh Fan.
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez. Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Montano.
Aye.
Myself is an I, item number twenty-three has been approved. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you um Mr. Erickson. Okay, moving on to item number twenty-four, under public hearings, conduct a public hearing and introduce number or am I introduce ordinance number uh thirty-eight point eight four one, amending sections of chapter ten of Title eleven of the Milpitas Municipal Code relating to off-street parking requirements for hotels and other lodging uses and making findings of CEQA exemption. Okay, alright. Um, and we'll look to our city staff. We have Rosalyn Thompson, our senior planner here.
I think we are both here. Good.
And Ned, they they put your name on here, Ned.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. We're happy to be with you again tonight for another item related to an update to our zoning ordinance uh text in this case. And just by way of a little bit of context, and Rosalyn will give us some more details, but in recent years, we've had a number of hotel projects under review by the city. Uh, there's a new Element Hotel that's almost complete over on Alder Lane. You can get it just off the eighty freeway. Another hotel that is currently under review on South McCarthy Boulevard. And we've had, you know, several hotels, the Holiday Inn and others up on California Circle. And as planning staff has worked with the developers of these projects, we have been told again, that our uh hotel parking standards are a little bit out of date. And so rather than wait for the comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance that we plan to undertake next year, we've we've chosen a couple of items that we thought we could address quickly now. Um, we have Rosalyn here tonight to present the staff report, and we also have a consultant that we've been working with on various zoning ornament and ordinance amendments. Her name is Holly Pearson, and she's also here joining us tonight uh from um her home. So I'll turn the time, and she's here to help answer any questions. I'll turn the time over to Rosalyn for the staff report, and thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. The item currently before you is a proposed zoning text amendment related to hotel parking requirements. In this presentation, I will highlight the proposed amendments to the zoning code as well as give a couple of examples of the application of the amended parking requirements to actual projects in the city. Um, in recent years, a change has occurred in the way travelers choose to get around locally during their out-of-town trips, especially business travelers. There is a growing trend of travelers using on-demand or app-based ride-hailing services such as Uber and Lyft instead of renting cars. In addition, um, the San Francisco Bay Area's public transportation systems, including Bay Area Rapid Transit or BART, Caltrain, and the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority Light Rail are well-connected to the Bay Area airports and other major destinations and offer easy and convenient ground transportation options for business and leisure travelers. In Milpitas, in addition to BART and VTA service, the city has recently received a micro-transit grant award from VTA to provide on-demand shuttle service. Next slide, please. So the current industry standards for hotel parking also reflect the recent decline in parking demand at hotels as specified in the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual. Based on the fourth edition of the Parking Generation Manual, published in two thousand and ten, the peak period parking demand for hotels is point six four parking spaces per occupied hotel room in urban areas and point nine parking spaces for occupied hotel room in suburban areas. In Milpitas, the pre-pandemic nightly occupancy rate was seventy to eighty percent. During the pandemic, the nightly occupancy rate has been significantly reduced to to between ten and forty percent. Next slide, please. On September third, two thousand and twenty, planning staff held a virtual meeting with members of the hotel industry to receive input and suggestions on the proposed amendments. Participants included Dynamic City Capital, a developer of two recently approved projects in Milpitas, the Element Hotel by Weston, and the AC Hotel by Marriott, and also uh Lodging Dynamics Hospitality Group, which is a hotel operator that works with the Dynamic City Capital. Planning staff discussed their industry experience related to changing hotel parking demand and their views on current hotel parking standards in various cities across the US. Input and suggestions from those industry stakeholders have been incorporated into the proposed zoning amendments for hotel parking, which also included data analysis and review of local ordinances from the Bay Area and throughout the country. Next slide, please. The current parking requirement for hotels and motels is one space per guest room or unit plus two spaces per manager's unit. Um, the reason why we're proposing these parking, proposed parking amendments, uh, proposed amendments to the hotel parking ratios are one, uh, parking is expensive to build. According to November two thousand and nineteen article in the Silicon Valley Business Journal, um, in the San Jose area, each surface parking space costs about thirty-three thousand dollars, and underground parking can cost up to seventy-five thousand dollars per space. Second, planning staff has observed that the off-street parking regulations in the zoning code require a greater number of parking spaces for hotels than is needed to meet the actual demand as expressed by project applicants and wanted to update the code language to better reflect growing trends in multimodal transportation usage throughout the South Bay and changes in current demand of parking spaces at hotels and motels. Third, a paved site area formerly reserved for parking could provide opportunities for community improvements such as landscaping, open space amenities, and or building area that could accommodate other businesses, uh, services, residential units, and other land uses that benefit the community and other efficient uses of land. Um, also, the proposed parking amendments are consistent with the new general plan and VMT policy. Next slide, please. For these reasons, city staff is proposing to amend the parking requirements for one specific land use, hotels, motels, and other lodging uses to more accurately reflect the current real demand for parking at these establishments. To achieve that end, the proposed ordinance amends the city's zoning regulations related to parking requirements for hotels and motels, including the following: amending the definition of hotel and boarding house in subsection two definitions of the zoning code, introducing new separate definitions for other types of tran- transient lodging uses, including motels and extended stay hotels, and lowering the base parking requirement to point seven spaces per guest room or unit. And I also like to note that um i- any other components of the ho- the of hotels such as office or conference spaces, that parking, the parking ratios for those respective spaces remain unchanged. So this proposed zoning text amendment only applies to hotel rooms and not the other amenities or spaces in a hotel. Next slide, please. So um the proposed amendments. So uh first, there are proposed further reductions to the base parking requirements for hotels and other lodging uses up to an additional thirty percent reduction. And it's at the discretion of the decision-making authority, planning commission, and/or city council based on the incorporation of parking demand measures into the project proposal. Reductions are based on a point system. Proposed reductions are viewed as part of project review, and adjustments can be made as needed. The ordinance includes a list of fourteen measures that are relevant to hotels, motels, and assigns a specific number of points to each measure. Examples of measures and corresponding point levels include, and next slides, please. Um, some of the the ones that are probably going to be used mo- more often are number one lodging establishment located within one-half mile of a fixed guideway transit station or stop, BART or VTA light rail, which is worth fifteen points. Um, providing free airport shuttle service, that's worth ten points. Um, providing free monthly transit passes for hotel employees, that's ten points. Um, guest shuttle service to other key points such as BART and VTO rail sta- rail stage stations during Caltrain train station and other uh major commercial centers, five to ten points. Next slide, please. Other examples include providing free onsite car-share vehicles, ten points, or free onsite shared bicycles for guest use, five points. Um, shared parking within a quarter of a mile of the lodging use and a shared parking agreement with owner, ten to five points, guest shuttle service to other key points, five to ten points, providing free onsite car-share vehicles, ten points, and free onsite shared bicycles for guest use, five points. Next slide. Under the proposed amendments, the required parking for hotels equals the base parking requirement minus the allowed parking reductions. The allowed parking reduction is a percentage based on the proposed parking demand reduction measures. So the total number of points corresponding to an applicant's proposed parking demand reduction measures would determine the possible reduction in required parking below the base requirement, and it operates as follows: for sixty points or more, the allowed parking reduction is thirty percent. For forty to fifty-nine points, it's twenty percent. And for twenty to thirty-nine points, the allowed parking reduction is ten percent. Next slide. The next few slides will apply the proposed parking requirements and allowed reductions to actual projects. The first case study is Holiday Inn located at eleven hundred Cadillac Court. The project was approved in two thousand and fifteen and opened in March two thousand and twenty. There are a hundred and twenty-eight guest rooms plus meeting and conference space. Under the current parking standard, the required parking is one space per room, one hundred and twenty spaces, plus twenty-four spaces for meeting areas for a total of a hundred and fifty-two parking spaces. A hundred and sixty-four parking spaces were provided for the project. Under the proposed amendment, the required base parking under the proposed amendment would be eighty-nine spaces. So point seven spaces per guest room times a hundred and twenty-eight, there are a hundred and twenty-eight rooms, plus the twenty-four spaces required for the meeting conference space, twenty-four spaces, equals a hundred and thirteen parking spaces. Next slide. Under the proposed amendments, if two parking demand management measures such as free airport shuttle service for guests, which is ten points, and free onsite shared cars for guest use, which is also ten points, were implemented at twenty points, the project will qualify for a ten percent parking reduction. Thus, the resulted required parking spaces would be a hundred and thirteen parking spaces minus ten percent, or eleven, which is a hundred and two parking spaces. Next slide, please. In this second example, an additional four demand management measures are introduced for a total of six. If the hotel implemented four further measures, including free onsite shared bicycles for guests, ten points, dedicated onsite passenger pickup drop-off zones, three points, active marketing, three points, uh, and charging a daily fee of at least twenty-five dollars for onsite parking, which is ten points. The resulting point total will be forty-one points, which equates to an additional parking reduction of twenty percent below the base requirement. The final reduced parking requirement that could be allowed under the code would be a hundred and thirty, thirteen parking spaces minus twenty percent, or twenty-three parking spaces, which equals ninety spaces. Next slide. The second case study is eighteen fifty-one McCarthy Boulevard. Planning staff is currently reviewing an application to construct a two hundred and sixteen-room hotel. Um, the required off-street parking under the current zoning code for all components of the proposed hotel is three hundred and thirty spaces. The project is currently designed at with a total of two hundred and sixty-seven parking spaces, including a hundred and two regular self-park spaces, a hundred and twenty-eight stacker spaces, sixty-four stalls with mechanical lifts to accommodate a hundred and twenty-eight vehicles, and thirty-seven valet spaces. Under the proposed amendments, the base parking requirement for this project would be a hundred and fifty-one spaces for the two hundred and sixteen guest rooms, that's seventy percent of of two hundred and sixteen, eighty-six spaces for the indoor-outdoor meeting spaces, and twenty-eight spaces for the lobby bar, for a total of two hundred and sixty-five parking spaces. Next slide, slide, please. The project is currently designed includes two features that are defined as parking demand management measures under the proposed zoning amendment as follows: mechanical lift spaces, a hundred and twenty-eight spaces or forty-eight point three percent of the project's base requirement, ten points, and valet parking, thirty-seven spaces or fourteen percent of the project's base parking requirement, five points. The total of fifteen points, however, does not reach the twenty-point threshold for granting an additional parking reduction. Thus, the total requirement for the project would remain at two hundred and sixty-five spaces. So suppose that the project implements an additional parking demand management measure to the cu- to currently propose. So suppose they add free airport shuttle service for guests, which is ten points. These measures would score twenty-five points under the proposed zoning amendments, which would qualify for the the project for a ten percent re- per ten percent reduction of the base parking requirement for a total of two hundred and thirty-eight spaces. Next slide, please. If a fourth measure were implemented, such as onsite car-share vehicles for guest use, which is ten points, the project qualifies for a twenty percent reduction, or fifty-three spaces. The parking requirement with the reduction is the base parking, which is two hundred and sixty-five spaces minus fifty-three spaces, the twenty percent reduction, and that totals to two hundred and twelve parking spaces. Next slide, please. As for CEQA, the introduction and adoption of this ordinance is categorically exempt from further review under the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA uh pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, section fifteen oh six one B three, also known as the common sixth sense exemption because this ordinance would lower the required number of parking spaces for hotels, motels, and similar lodging uses. Since there will be no changes to the number of hotel rooms based on this ordinance, there'd be no increase in vehicle trips or traffic impacts associated with hotel projects. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing and move to close public hearing following comments. Uh, the city attorney will read aloud the title of ordinance number thirty-eight point eight four one and move to wave the first reading beyond the title and introduce ordinance number thirty-eight point eight four one amending sections of chapter ten of Title eleven of the Milpitas Municipal Code relating to off-street parking requirements for hotels and other lodging uses and making findings of a CEQA exemption. That concludes staff's presentation on this project, and I'm available to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you so much, Rosalyn, for the presentation. I'll go ahead and move to open up the public hearing, looking for a second.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Chua, all in favor of opening the public hearing. Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Montano.
Aye.
Myself is an I, the public hearing is now open. Let's go to our first uh speaker, Voltaire Montemayor.
Okay, I got my, I'm buttoned. Thank you. Um, yeah, to all, um, thank you. Anyway, it's really, this one is very complicated one, but it should be approved because we want the win-win business, good business for everybody. Uh, the fa- good business for everybody. Uh, the favor of the city, the favor we ask, we hope from Sika, and the villa for all the owner. In other words, when it comes to us, our volume of cars, you mentioned, uh, the presenter mentioned the annex overflow, um, uh, uh, the tunnel, the transit, and the shuttle. It's very good. I think that's the only way, not the only way, but it's a good way to solve a probable problem of Sika approving these projects. In other words, um, I like business in Milpitas. In other words, good presentation. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Montemayor. Looking for any further public comment? If you're with us, a lot of items tonight, folks. If you're with us for this particular item, uh, we are taking your public comments here. And I'll look at the Zoom attendees to ensure I'm doing my due diligence. And I'll see anybody else. I'll move to close the public hearing, looking for a second.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Chu, all in favor of virtual call. Councilmember Fan.
Hi.
Dominguez.
Hi.
Councilwoman Chu.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Montana.
Hi.
And myself is an I. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you, everybody. Bring it back to their virtual dais here. Um, I do want to say that there's a couple ways I'm looking at this. And to amend the parking policy for hotels strictly, uh, is one thing. Uh, but to put something within the policy as the point system, um, you know, I'm, I'm watching Rosalyn's presentation. I'm thinking, you know, we're really pushing for our guests here in Milpitas, uh, our hotel guests, we're really pushing for them to, to take Uber, uh, or to get from San Jose, uh, Mineta International Airport on a hotel shuttle, uh, which is only about ten minutes away, right? No traffic. And, and so we're pushing for a policy here tonight that will encourage folks when they're checking in with the hotel, when they're on the hotel website, they're seeing that we're encouraging, um, multimodal transportation, uh, and, and we're, we're, we're encouraging for cars not to be in the parking lot. And so that shared, uh, with a shared ride-sharing, uh, you know, ride-sharing is encouraged. I, I know when I travel, uh, nothing helps me more than to see a hotel have a, a shuttle, uh, where they're, they know I'm coming in, they have my itinerary, and they pick me up, and I don't even have to pay for Uber. Um, but, you know, uh, the loading zones are the places to be, uh, here that the, you know, here, you know, the Center for Disease Control has approved, um, safe travel for those that have been vaccinated, domestic and abroad. So, uh, you know, our loading zones are really, um, the hoot, and, and ride-sharing is, and, and, you know, if you take away ride-sharing, you know, maybe we wouldn't be talking about this policy. But here we are in two thousand twenty-one, um, going into the rest of this decade. Uh, another way I'm looking at it is, is our hotel location and, and revenues. Um, I miss having, um, you know, an extra ten million dollars in TOT. Uh, I know projected, we can go up to twenty million dollars in TOT, uh, through, um, the past handful of years that I've, I've been able to serve in this capacity. We've seen, uh, hotel room inventory go up forty percent. And, and to see that there's hotels in the pipeline that want to continue to add to our city coffers. Uh, I'm very excited for things to get back to normal. Uh, and we, and we see that every day. We see that every day in our society. And we'll see what happens June fifteenth. You know, the governor did say that was the day, and I'm just really looking forward to business travel coming back. Our local industries are doubling down on their real estate investments here in Silicon Valley. And, and our city is going to be in a lot better place. Uh, we'll look back on this day here with the, the budget in mind and, and, um, city councils of the next several years of the rest of the decade will, will really be appreciative of the hotel taxes. So, um, those are my thoughts. I'm in support of item number twenty-four. And I'll look to my colleagues for any further comment. Next up with the virtual raised hand, Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, I had a question in regards to, um, the parking. Um, so I was just wondering, do we have any mechanical parking, like the underground parking structures? Uh, many of them we see probably like in New York or in LA. I think San Jose might have one or two. I just want to confirm, we don't have any, do we have any in Milpitas?
I don't believe we do. We've, uh, had various discussions, and it's been proposed, but I, I, other than the, uh, the hotel that was mentioned on South McCarthy Boulevard that is proposing mechanical parking, and we, we don't have any that's currently existing.
Thank you very much, Ned. Um, do we have, so just because that's the next incoming technology, I think we, uh, one of my concerns is I want to think that we want to move into, um, a place that we're going to be using the lifts and the shuttle services. Um, the reality is that unfortunately not, we're not there yet, and, and we hope to get there, and I definitely think technology uh, will get us there. Um, I definitely believe that once we move through this pandemic, um, we currently have been able to see the surplus in funding, uh, because of the hotels we already have. And so, um, as one council member, my concerns are for the community, um, and the extra parking that hotels bring into their neighborhood. And so we see this, um, all this construction. I mean, I've heard it at the pines, I've heard it in, in that downtown, I want, one day we'll have a downtown, but the downtown corridor around Great Mall. Um, so I'm just concerned about the parking. I feel that there might be some other elements coming in the future. Do we do a point system, um, for those who maybe have these type of garages? I know they may be a little more expensive, but I don't know if we were able to consider a point system for these parking structures?
Yeah, to my knowledge, this is the first, thank you, um, Councilmember Dominguez. This, to my knowledge, this is the first time that we have introduced the idea of a point system, uh, into our zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you so much, Ned, for that. Um, so currently, our zoning ordinance is based out of square footage? Sorry, just educate me a little bit on this.
Rosalyn, you may have to help with this because you deal with it more often than I do. Maybe I'll, I'll just have you answer that.
So. So Councilmember Dominguez, so it's actually based on rooms.
Okay.
Yeah, it's based on.
So the calculation per room, you have to have a certain number of, of, uh, parking spaces.
Right.
All right. Um, the last question that I have is, um, in terms of, I understand we want to do like the shuttle service. Um, do we know if there's any hotels that currently provide the shuttle services to other destinations, or some of the uh, examples that I saw in some of the slides, um, as we're moving through the point system? And if so, how many of those fall into these forecasted categories? Sure, we were able to do an inventory.
Councilmember Dominguez, so an inventory of our current hotels that are, are using, um, shuttle service?
Yeah, I guess one of the things that I'm trying to understand is, let's say we did this point system now. How many of the hotels now maybe have some sort of rideshare program, shuttle service, right? Just trying to get an idea of if there's any hotels that currently have and they might have not thought about it because they have to do the parkings, um, the parking numbers that we currently have allocated. But I'm just trying to see if there's a trend in that service.
Okay, I'm going to ask, um, our consultant if, um, if that was, if, if that's some data that she has. Um, Holly, is, do you possibly have any data on whether or not any of our existing hotels, uh, are, um, using shuttle service?
Sure. Good evening, councilmembers. Holly Pearson, I'm with Michael Baker International Consultant to the City. Um, I did not, uh, gather data on existing shuttle services for hotels. Um, I, I do also, uh, Rosalyn, in her presentation, went through the, um, the kind of test projects on which we tested out the, the point system. Uh, one of those hotels that we looked at, and I believe it was the one on McCarthy Boulevard that's currently under review, um, in their operational plan noted that they are planning to offer shuttle service. I believe it was to the BART station. So, um, unfortunately, I don't have numbers on, uh, existing hotels and, uh, shuttle services that they offer. But I do know just, um, kind of colloquially from experience that it's airport shuttle service certainly is common, and perhaps other destination shuttles are becoming more of a trend.
And, uh, Councilmember Dominguez, I would just add to that, um, one of the examples we used was the Element Hotel over on Alder Lane. And in working with that developer in particular, they had a, a whole list of, uh, parking demand management, uh, things that they were going to incorporate into their plan. As you will recall, that hotel will actually share parking with another hotel that is to be built on the adjacent location. But they're also within, you know, easy walking distance of what VTA light rail, and they were planning to have a shuttle service. Um, we recently made a presentation, uh, I can't remember if it was to the full council or to the or to, I think it was last, your last meeting of the full council, and Jay Lee was here and made a presentation on, uh, micro-mobility, shared e-bike. If we were, uh, are to implement that pilot program, then hotels might be one of the, especially near the BART station. That would, they would definitely be one of our target businesses that we would want to, uh, work with to locate those, uh, bicycles and possibly e-scooters as well.
Thank you so much, Ned. Thank you very much, staff, for that information.
Thank you very much. Uh, I do want to take a moment to check in with our director of planning, Ned. So, you know, this is a policy amendment. I think it serves a great purpose, but in a real-life situation, for any hotel project to, um, sort of, um, utilize this uh, item that we're talking about right now, it would still have to go before the planning commission or a body to approve. Uh, and, and, and that really, I think, ensures our communities engage, yeah. And so, um, I do want to, um, kind of bring that up here, that, you know, it's, it, there still needs to be approval for, for any project of hotel uh, by the right governing body. So, there absolutely, and that, right? And so, I do want to note that, um, the, yeah, or whoever, okay. Because the community engagement is a key piece. Okay, great. Ned, did you want to, am I?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you. Yes, you're correct that, uh, the hotel, uh, use, uh, typically requires the approval of the conditional use permit by the planning commission. And as, uh, Rosalyn noted in her presentation, we, we really started looking at hotel parking with the base parking and, um, whether or not it was appropriate to have the one-to-one ratio plus the two. Um, if you look really closely at the existing ratio, that really speaks to an older model of the motel where you usually had motel rooms, and then you had a, a manager's unit that was attached to the hotel with a family living in it, and that's why the, the hotel parking standards reflect that. Um, in newer hotels, you usually have a manager, you don't have a living unit, you just have managers that come in and out. And then based, it's really, a lot of it is based on the occupancy of the hotel, and, um, most hotels are rarely, if ever, fully occupied. They're usually, as Rosalyn noticed, it's seventy to eighty percent occupancy. Thankfully, in Milpitas, we enjoy very high occupancy rates because of our location in Silicon Valley and near the airport. So we're, we're usually at an eighty, ninety percent rate, but we still have plenty of, uh, parking at those hotels. And then, um, we wanted to be sort of a little bit cutting-edge, and that's why we, um, toyed with the idea of introducing this idea of a point system and further reductions. And again, um, as Rosalyn noted in her presentation, all of, all of the, that additional reduction is discretionary by either the planning commission or the council. So yes, and, and as part of the presentation that we would bring that use permit to you, uh, you, you would have total, um, say over whether or not those additional ten, twenty, or thirty percent reductions, or somewhere in between, would be applied to any given project.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Ned, and, and, and so the Milpitas family will always be involved and have their voices heard. You know, for any project. So, except Councilmember Chu.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Ms. Thompson, I just have a couple of questions. Um, because we are now using the BMD policy, vehicle miles per hour, well, maybe vehicle miles traveled, would we have reduced it anyway, a little bit? Versus using the LRS level of service?
So, um, that's a good question. So the vehicular miles traveled policy, um, actually relates to CEQA. And so it analyzes, it analyzes the transportation impact of a project, um, on the environment. So, um, that's, uh, that's a related issue, but it's not, it's not
Related to the parking.
To parking, correct.
I just want to make that clear.
Yeah.
When your proposed amendment on the equation, parking requirement equals base parking minus reduction, where'd you get the base parking? Did you do that on the point seven?
So, I'm sorry. Um, so, um, and Holly or Ned, you can chime in. So that base point seven is based upon occupancy, typical occupancy that we see. So seventy percent occupancy is what we see, so that's point seven.
So, okay, that's right. I wasn't clear on that one. On, um, I think this is a timely amendment, really, on the number of parking requirements, and I, and I, I welcome it. My concern is, if you look at your point system, how do we monitor that? You look at the slide on the, the several, several reductions, the point system. How would we monitor that? Like the sharing of, uh, and then the issuance of coupons? And, and the ride-sharing, uh, how, can we go back to that slide that shows the, the different point systems? My concern is, how do we monitor? Not this one. Uh, where you show the point system. Hmm, this one, we can, yeah, we can go, we can go back.
Okay.
When we, you know, what, yeah, how do we monitor this? I see it very useful. I'm just concerned about the monitoring.
And that's, that's a great question, too. So, um, as Ned, um, stated earlier, all hotels require a conditional use permit. And as part of their conditions of approval, whatever reductions they applied for, um, we can, uh, monitor that through the conditional use permit process. Like before they receive their occupancy permit, they have to provide, um, whatever measures that they're doing. They have to show that there, there's proof that, um, they're, um, undertaking those measures. Um, you know, and if council would like, they could have, they could require an annual, annual monitoring by staff or, um, any other, um, uh, department by the city.
I, I try not to give more work to our staff, yeah. So if you guys can tighten this and find a way to still enforce what's on the point system, I would welcome that one. It's just a suggestion. But overall, I like the amendment.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Chu. I, I want to follow up what you're saying. It's like, you know, when I go to Hawaii, I'm in Honolulu, I mean Waikiki, you know, those hotels, they have shuttles and standard operating procedures and the conditional use permit and those sorts of things. So, these controls that you're, um, looking, uh, to advocate for, um, you know, it's a, it's a practice used in so many places, like Waikiki, and, 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 and I'm sure there's a similar framework we use here in Milpitas. And, and that's one of the questions I had, the same one you had, Councilwoman Chu. And so I'm, I'm very reassured that, um, these practices are, are very much industry-established. So, I'm with you. I'm with you, Councilwoman Chu. Thank you.
If, if I may just add something to what Rosalyn said, I agree with, with Rosalyn's, um, response. I also just wanted to point out, uh, in the actual zoning text amendments, in section, uh, ten dash fifty-three dot fifteen, allowed reductions to parking, uh, subsection B. So it says, "An applicant requesting a reduction to the minimum required parking for a lodging use, shall submit a written description of all proposed parking demand reduction and site design measures, and a written justification of the anticipated reduction in parking demand that would result." So a lot of the measures are things that would be shown on, on the actual site plans. Others would be part of an Others would be part of an operational plan that staff could review through the conditional use permit. And I agree with Rosalyn that, um, if necessary, there could be monitoring after the hotel was actually in operation.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Next up with the virtual raised hand, Vice Mayor Montano.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ned and Rosalyn for the presentation. So I had a few questions on this. So with the presentation, the point system, I know this is a novel. Twenty to thirty percent decrease in parking is pretty substantial in my mind. So there's three areas that I want to touch on. It's, uh, the, the car space, the parking space, is that for compacts or is that for the regular parking? Cause I know some areas in town have a compact slot for the car. And some big cars can't fit in this compact car. So I'm, so I'm wondering, are those spaces that you're factoring in, are those for compact cars or regular standard cars?
Um, Councilmember Montana, so our zoning code does allow compact spaces to a certain percentage. So it, it would include both, both regular and compact spaces.
Oh, okay. And I also had concerns about how do you monitor? You know, the, the developer might say, well, yes, I'm going to be doing this, this and that. But once the parking spaces are hit, that place is developed and there's no parking spaces. And they don't provide the shuttle services for some reason or other, maybe it might be going through a economic downturn. So no more shuttle services. I, I don't know. So, um, yeah, that was my concern and you've already answered that. That monitoring system, but again, that's going to take staff time and that's one of my concerns. The other one that is also missing is, um, that you didn't touch on was the workers. The workers that work there, they need a place to park. So did you factor in the workers that work at the hotels? Uh, or just, um, you know, because you, you said you calculated by the room, the number of rooms. But I don't know if you considered the workers that have to travel in their car to, um, provide the services. That's their job.
Um, so yeah, so included with the total parking requirement for hotels is rooms. And then also any other amenity space or any other space. And in those parking requirements, like say, for example, you have a restaurant. Those spaces in have built in them account for employees that are going to be working there. So, um, so the hotel parking requirement is based upon occupancy of, of the hotel rooms, which is point seven of the base, um, which is the base requirement. And then any other, uh, any other meeting rooms, conference rooms, restaurants, uh, offices. Are added to that for the total parking requirement for the hotel.
Yeah, I'm, uh, yeah, I'm just, I'm just afraid that if, you know, we, once they build it and we give them that twenty, thirty percent decrease in, in parking and then. You know, the monitoring, if, and if they continue those perks. Or if they don't continue the perks, then, then what? So, uh, and then, and then remember when people travel from out of town, come, they, they come in their car. And then if they're going to go to a conference, let's say in San Jose. They have to leave their car there at, at the hotel and then take a shuttle or, or Uber. But they still need the car, you know, they're not, you know, they still need a place to park. So, yeah, I'm just, um, I'm just concerned that it's, it's quite substantial, twenty, thirty percent decreases.
Vice Mayor, if I may, thinking about our hotels here and some are geared towards, like you said, corporate travel. And, and I think this policy amendment is an opportunity for a case by case evaluation. By the planning commission. Um, I think you were a part of the hotel on McCandless and Great Mall Parkway, the one there at the corner. That's going to be there, I'm not going to say which brand it is, but I believe you were part of the council that approved that one. And so, you know, there, there's not a whole ton of parking on McCand, by the Trader Joe's district area. So, you know, I, I think this policy amendment is, um, is a fair point system for, for each hotel uniquely. And I know that you supported that hotel on McCandless. And, and it's really a case by case and that should be a great success of folks staying there and taking an Uber. So that's what I wanted to follow up with you, Vice Mayor, um, as, as to my perspective.
Right. Um, yeah. So thank you for your comments and I will, um. I will consider that as I vote. The, um, I guess, for me, this is great if it's near transit. But if it's far away and distant, you know, like say, for example, California Circle. So I'm just wondering if staff can, you know, is there room for improvement? Is, I guess is what I'm asking staff.
And I, I, you know, I think that, um, the planning commission, you know, would really look at each project differently. Based on what you're saying, Vice Mayor, are we located near transit? Uh, and there's going to be a lot of opportunities in the next ten years with the Bart Station area, Milpitas Metro. Or is it a, a site that's closer to our suburbs? And, and so, um, I think this is a pretty strong policy amendment tonight. And, and as I move forward to support it, I'm really thinking about the planning commission doing their job to ensure that the community.
Correct. But once you put an ordinance, that's, that's set in stone, you know, in the parking. So even though they, they, they have, uh, some input. But they still have to go through the parameters of the ordinance. See what I'm saying?
And the planning commission, I think they've been outstanding. They really nailed, they are kind of been nailed, hammering the nail. And so I know that Councilmember Chua was on the planning commission.
Right. Okay.
Tight ship. I'm just saying.
Vice Mayor, uh, if I, I think I can shed a little bit more light on your, on your concern.
Oh, please.
So, uh, as Mr. Thomas noted, we, we looked at a lot of, uh, other examples of parking requirements for hotels in the Bay Area and elsewhere. Some jurisdictions do include a component in the parking requirement for employees, but many increasingly don't. Um, there's just an overall parking requirement. And, um, Rosalyn in her presentation, she noted the, sort of the, the occupancy level typically for hotels. And the parking demand that's been, um, the, the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual. So it's based on actual surveys of parking demand. So both the hotel occupancy rate typically is less than, uh, you know, a hundred percent. And the demand even at full occupancy is less typically than one vehicle per room or one parking space per room. So that was why, um, we felt, looking at the entire picture, that the point seven base parking requirement. Should be enough to accommodate both guest parking and hotel, I'm sorry, and employee parking. And I also just wanted to point out that these are minimum parking requirements. So a hotel operator or a hotel shopper could opt to provide more parking if they felt that it was necessary for their business model, for their location. For sort of what they expect their travelers to, uh, kind of travel patterns to be. So, um, I just thought that might offer a little bit of reassurance.
Actually, that, actually, I, I, that did clarify, it's, it's the minimum. So they could, they could actually do more if they want. Okay. That, that's, I like your answer.
And, uh, Councilmember Montana, I'd also like to add again. I, I'd also like to add that, uh, again, they're all subject to conditional use permits. And they're all subject to, um, uh, discretion by whatever hearing body reviews the park. So just because they, just because an applicant requests a parking reduction, doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to get it.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have Councilmember Fan.
Yeah, um, I wanted to say that I, um, agree with the remarks made by, uh, my colleague, Councilmember Chua. Pretty much a hundred percent there. Ultimately, you know, I feel like I need to remind folks that. The council plays a role in policy and also land use. And right now we're discussing the, the policy element of it. We always reserve the right to exert our land use, uh, decision-making authority. As Mayor Tran pointed out, you know, um, projects come before the planning commission. You know, that's one way that we have oversight of these projects. And ultimately, as with virtually every planning application, everything is on a case by case base basis. So, um, just because, um, a project qualifies for exemptions. Uh, like Rosalyn, uh, pointed out, it's, you know, not necessarily the case that we would, uh, approve that project. Uh, with those, um, uh, requests. The, the, the main thing is to, um, lay out the opportunities, um, out there so that we can have more projects coming before us. Um, so that we can expand our, uh, economic opportunities. That said, um, I do support staff recommendations. With the noted suggestions from, uh, Councilmember Chua. And that's how I'll be voting tonight. I'll be brief.
Thank you very much. Fantastic. I don't see any further virtual raised hands. Let's go to our city attorney, Christopher Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, what this council has before you is ordinance number thirty-eight point eight four one. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Milpitas amending sections of chapter ten of title eleven of the Milpitas Municipal Code. Relating to off-street parking requirements for hotels and other lodging uses and making findings of CEQA exemption. And we'd be looking for a motion to introduce the ordinance and wait for the reading beyond the title.
I'll move to item number twenty-four, looking for a second.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Chua. All in favor of virtual call, Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez.
No.
Councilmember Chua.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montano. There with your microphone, please, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'll go ahead because we are trying to get, you know, I'm looking at the bigger picture. We're trying to get cars off the road. So I'm, I'm going to vote yes.
And myself as an I, the motion is carried. Item number twenty-four is approved. That's it with public hearings. Thank you, thank you very much, everybody. Rosalyn, Holly, Ned, thank you. Thank you so much. Moving on here, we're going to go to actually item number twenty-nine. Per Councilmember Dominguez, discuss distribution of COVID-19 vaccines and consider drafting a letter to the county of Santa Clara.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And thank you so much, Council, for your time and for bringing this item before us, uh, for us to discuss. Um, I definitely wanted to make sure that we have time, uh, to discuss a very important issue, um, in our community. Which is still the distribution of COVID-19 vaccines. Um, and so I'm going to go ahead and, um, we're going to go try this for the first time. Uh, I'll just go ahead and say next, I'm ready for the next slide. And then if staff could go ahead, perfect, thank you. So just to give a little bit of background, I definitely attached a memo, um, for your reading. Um, and on Tuesday, February sixteenth, um, our office made a request to this council to dis- discuss the distribution of vaccines, um, placing an equity lens on the distribution services and how it's affecting census tracts in the city of Milpitas. As you many know, um, the structural inequities in Silicon Valley manifests itself across most institutions and systems in Santa Clara County. This includes our own healthcare systems and the access that our patients have, um, here in Milpitas. And many of them depend on the county. And right now we are all depending on the county and the federal government for vaccines. COVID-19 has impacted our neighborhoods here in Milpitas in very different ways. I'm sure many of you have had conversations with our community members. And, um, we are definitely seeing that data reflect in some of the information that I'll be sharing with you today. It's important for us to understand that we do have vulnerable populations that have been disproportionate, disproportionately affected more than others. And impacted by COVID-19. And that includes, uh, the city of Milpitas. As you know, Milpitas has one zip code, which is nine five zero three five. I know there's some, uh, post offices with a nine five zero three six. But in the data-driven points that is shared by the county, one of the things that many, uh, people are now starting to put more focus on are the census tracts. Because if you look at our entire zip code, it reflects our entire city. It doesn't necessarily reflect the individual neighborhoods. Um, next. So one of our goals is to make sure not to leave anybody behind as we move through this pandemic. The county, um, has identified some variables that are impacting the rate of vaccinations. And not only countywide, but we could see that here in the city of Milpitas. Vaccine supplies, access to vaccines, um, closing the disparity in the equity gap. Vaccine hesitancy from community members as this is something new, or they may not feel comfortable taking the vaccine. Uh, again, knowing the vaccine effectiveness and its different variants. Unfortunately, there has been no, uh, show for that second dosage. Um, and then again, information is evolving. The child's eligibility has changed. And now we have, um, the opportunity for, I believe it's sixteen and over to get vaccinated. But now it's closing the gap in this range, um, age as well as in the age that was presented before us. The county does suggest that if these variables, um, were not implemented, most, we would be able to achieve our goals, uh, by June. So you could see here, these are the vaccination rates in Santa Clara County as of April nineteenth. Go ahead and put the next slide. So I want to spend a little bit of time on this map. So this map shows the cumulative percentage of county residents over the age of sixteen who were administered at least one dose of vaccine of COVID-19. And this is by census tract. So the way that I have been told is a census tract look at, um, it's kind of like a precinct. So view, if we would be in the interactive space, we would put our cursor on top of one of these, um, little boxes. And then it would tell us a lot of information. So I invite you to do that if you haven't done so, uh, during, using the county website. However, I did put a screenshot and then on the bottom left, you'll see what the colors mean. The colors here in Milpitas that we, um, are concerned about are the ones in yellow. Because that means that less than forty-four percent of people over the age of sixteen have had at least one COVID shot. And so Milpitas overall is doing really good. You see here the dark green area, that is a really good, um, track. That means that more than fifty-nine percent of those folks are getting vaccinated. And so we definitely still want to pay attention to the light green and the yellow. Because as you could see, some of those numbers, if you would put the cursor reflect, or are identical to some areas in the city of San Jose, like the East Side. Or District Seven, which have very, um, high COVID-19 positive and low vaccinations. And so definitely here in the city, we want to make sure that we are assessing the needs of the census tracts. Go ahead and put the next slide, please. And so many of us know that there is a structured inequities, like I said, in Silicon Valley. So one of the roles, I believe, as a leadership team is to advocate, um, especially in the time where things are changing so much. On behalf of our communities. Luckily for us now, as of April thirteen, you see this map, these are the move back signs. These are like the mobility vaccination sites, um, that the county is going to be provided. Go ahead and put the next screen, please. So you need to remember that this memo was presented to the council back in February sixteenth. So a lot of information has changed. We have updated that information in this presentation before you. So you could see, um, the latest developments just as of today at three P M. Where the city of Milpitas, um, is going to be having the first Santa Clara County mobile vaccination site at the Milpita Sports Center. This is going to be supported by our Recreation Community Service. And will provide five hundred vaccinations on one day. So it will be an all-day clinic, mostly with walk-ins. There is going to be some reservations for, um, nonprofit organization staff members. Again, the site logistics, because this is such new information, is going to be finalized by the county and our staff. Again, the site logistics, because this is such new information, is going to be finalized by the county and our staff. They are going to be giving information to the community in different languages. And county and city staff will work together again to close that gap in vaccination access in the census tracts here in the city of Milpitas. But I want to also note in conversations with our healthcare providers here in this region, as well as some nonprofit organizations. That the work is not done. And just because we have one site, that definitely does not mean that we are in the clear. We have. One move back site date identified, and that's why I do believe it's really important for the city of Milpitas. To stay engaged, not only with a letter to thank our county. Go ahead and put the next slide, please. Not only with a letter to thank our county, but also to move it as in a formal way, because what's happening is. That the county is getting a lot of letters from other cities. Other cities did this back in February, and we didn't really do a formalized letter. Where I actually think it's really important that it has all of the signatures of every council member. It's just a representation of unity and really representation of what Milpitas needs at this moment during the pandemic. So what I would like to have is a conversation with you and have a discussion on what do you want to see in this letter to Santa Clara County? Some ideas that our council office is placing on the screen before you are just thoughts and consideration, and we hope that we could get your support. We have had active conversations with our congress member as well as our board supervisor, and we definitely are tuning in. Representing the city, but also to get that information and back to our constituents. And as well today, present it before you in this memo. So some of the ideas that our our office, along with city leaders here in our city, have suggested is to. Send a formal thank you letter to the County of Santa Clara for their work and their partnership with our city. Request additional vaccination sites such as in Milpitas High School, and this is going to be really important, because. What I have been told by healthcare professionals is that that sixty plus is now available, but that doesn't mean that that sixty plus age is going to get it. And a lot of the younger folks are a little more hesitant. Remember that some of the stuff I showed in the previous slide. And so I do believe that by forming a partnership at the high school, that's going to help us control these numbers that we are seeing decline, but we're still, again, not in the clear. It would be great to have a site vaccination at Saint Elizabeth's Church. I know that they have been asking and been advocating. And so I hope that this leadership could support them by including them in this letter. And the Milpita Sports Complex, which as you saw in my previous slides, is one of the sites that we have started with. The other thing that our community has requested is to get training for the city of Milpita staff to do phone banking in partnership with the Public Health Institute. And this is to help Milpita's residents register for those vaccinations. Yes, we could do that, but there is some specific questions that are coming up, and there is a particular training that other cities are providing. For their staff in collaboration with the county, and it's something that we confirmed today our city does not have. The other request that we would like to include in this letter is scheduling fairs and mobile clinics at churches and maybe launching a pilot program over at Saint Elizabeth's Church. And finally, requesting a do a train the trainers for high school students who wish to become COVID nineteen ambassadors. Inform a formal partnership between the city, county, and Milpita Unified School District. These are all things that other cities have done, things that we have identified again as just one office. But we definitely would love to have a council discussion again on what do you want to see in this letter, and we hope that to have your support. In order to have that letter direction, so it could include all five of our signatures, and it includes a different ask. Go ahead and show the next slide, please. So at this time, the recommendation would be to have a city council discussion to identify the service gaps related to COVID vaccinations. Identify county services that can help residents in our city get access to COVID nineteen vaccinations and other additional resources. And then finally, direct city staff to write a formal letter to Santa Clara County to thank them for their partnership. Request additional COVID nineteen vaccination sites and county supportive services to the residents in the city of Milpitas. This concludes my presentation. It would be great to have a conversation and hopefully get your support to move forward. The recommendations that are before you on the screen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Dominguez. I really appreciate your efforts to represent the underrepresented. Here in our nine five zero three five. I just want to ensure that the county government. Gets a clear communication from our city. I believe they have extended. Vaccine vaccination services to our city through the mobile testing site. At the Milpita Sports Center, which is actually in the heart of an area where there's a lot of underserved people. And I just want to make sure if we're going to communicate with our county leaders, we're sending. A message of understanding. I would hate to ask for something that they've already provided. With vaccinations. And I feel that our mobile vaccination site at the sports center is a pilot program in itself. We are going to be able to determine. The need for vaccinations. We are at a point here on April the twentieth where everybody has access to a vaccination. I saw a parent in our community. Post on social media, they took their high school aged. Child to get vaccinated. And. Folks in the community reaching out to ask for vaccination sites, websites, or appointment locations. Not getting that as much anymore. And. I'm not sure of the fiscal impact, which is a key consideration. I did not see that in your presentation. Maybe I'll go over to our city manager just for some general information. About what we do have, which is the mobile vaccination site at the Smilpita Sports Center. Steve, maybe you or one of your, one of our city staff can provide how the financing for this service is working. I used F word finance. Next thing I know, I see Walter. But I just, you know, I'm trying to learn and be educated myself. On how the city and the county are collaborating, particularly with the finances aspect.
So at the site, yeah, thank you, Steve. At the site at the sports center, we're providing the temporary staff and support. But we do not pay for anything, and Renee can probably explain a little bit better.
Welcome.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I do apologize, my internet was going out just a little bit, but it sounds like you were questioning. What it costs us to have this testing and vaccination at the sports center. We do not pay the county to come out. It's a it's a service and collaboration. For them to offer this to our residents and countywide. Any support services that Recreation Community Services offers to the logistics of the site, we do pay those part-time. Employees. However, we work with the finance to capture those hours and then apply for reimbursement through FEMA.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And Mayor, if I may just clarify, in the memo that was written and was distributed, I don't know if staff, could you please put up? Is there a way to put up the memo that was distributed to council? In order to address the concern of the mayor, where he said there was no fiscal impact, there was actually a line item in the bottom. We did have a conversation with Office of Supervisor Lee this morning, and then we did talk to staff, so we did do plenty of research that. Definitely certifies what Renee has stated, that these are all refundable activities. And so the city of Milpitas will not be paying out. In addition, some of the programs that we identified on that slide in the recommendations. Those are also all free programs, which are currently already in place in the county. But the city of Milpitas has never really formalized a request, and that is why we're asking for this letter to happen. Necessarily, the county will not see this as a double request, because they understand that this request is that everything is just changing ongoing. But I think it's really important for us to be on the forefront and to definitely be proactive versus reactive. Because these services are going to other areas in our region, and they're not coming to Milpitas. And so I do believe that's why it's really important for us to draft this letter and send it out.
I thought the mobile testing site is going to be at the Milpita Sports Center. I I I think I'm okay. With the mobile testing site at the Milpita Sports Center. It's really a facility that has always served as a processing area for different types of emergencies. And I think we use sandbags over there during the. The wet months, the flood prone seasons. And I'm completely okay with folks going to the Milpita Sports Center for the mobile. Vaccination site. I will support the letter. Thanks. I'm always grateful for the county. But the work's not done yet. I would think that we would send a letter of thanks once the services have been concluded. But, you know, really at this time. I'm fine with the great news we got today, which is we have a mobile vaccination site. At the Milpita Sports Complex. I'll go to my colleagues for any virtual raised hands. Okay, next up, Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. I was trying to look for, I I read a few days ago on Facebook that there is another. There there, it was sponsored by one of our churches, and it was done at the. At Seafood City, but I couldn't find it to to share it with everybody. So there are, there are, there are other sites other than the. The Milpita Sports Center. That's the, they're doing vaccination.
Thank you, Councilmember. At this time, we actually talked to other nonprofits, and there has not been any in Milpitas. So the vaccinations are coming through two programs, are coming through the state, which is in the federal's funding, which is through the. Through the Office of Congressmember Rokana, as well as Congressmember Solafren. So they both have been advocating. So. One of the purposes of the letter is we don't have to necessarily say where you want the vaccination sites. But I think it's really important for us to ask for more vaccines, because we we need some more in nine five zero three five, and those are becoming. Although there is some sites, I talked to seven community members and five said they they couldn't find a vaccine here in Milpitas. They had to move to San Jose. So when you start talking about the vulnerable populations and you start talking about access and equity, you're gonna see, like you saw on the map. That the data is showing us that Filipinos, blacks, and Latinos are the ones that unfortunately are. Passing away because of COVID nineteen and higher numbers and are being affected more economically than other. That other communities. So that is where I do believe that it is concerning for Milpitas. If you talk to our parishioners at Saint Elizabeth's, if you talk to our priest, he is very active. He is calling me every other day, and he really wants mobile, or he wants vaccinations, which I do believe the county will be able to provide. But again, as the leaders of the city, I think it's important for us to be proactive and at least sending a letter, because all the other cities are sending one. And we have yet to send one letter with all of our signatures on it. And that is, I think, troublesome, because we are not representing our community in the middle of a pandemic, the way that I believe we should.
So let me, I just want a clarification from you. What exactly do? Because there are so many on the on the slide that you showed. But the bottom line is, I want to see the bottom line. The bottom line is you want a letter to the county. Saying that we need more vaccines.
Can I finally ask, how many of you read the memo?
No, I'm looking at your slide.
I understand, but I'm asking Councilmember with all due respect, did you read the memo that I sent out?
No, I didn't see it.
Could I please?
Wendy, you sent it out? Wendy, you sent it out?
Today.
What time?
I sent it out about four thirty-ish, four o'clock-ish.
That's kind of last.
I didn't see it, to be honest with you. I didn't see it, because I was in another meeting, you know, rushed to this thing. Four thirty is a little bit too close.
Well, actually, council, all of the power presentations get sent around the same time the day of. But what I would say is, staff, could we go ahead and put up that memo?
I don't want the memo. I just want to see your outline.
Memo gives you the direction. So that's why I think it's important for us to have the memo. It's it's part of the additional attachments as well. So I'm not too sure if a staff member could.
That's it. I understand it's challenging to receive a attachment or any type of document, just. Hour, just an hour or two before the actual meeting and.
Thank you. So the memo itself is very, very short. And so I understand everybody's time is very valuable, and we don't have timelines for the memos, and the memos and PowerPoints are usually distributed. It's normal to get it the same day. So I know you're a new council member, and so I just want to share with you this memo where the recommendation. Answer is exactly the question that you asked. So the recommendation conversation that I, the the PowerPoint slide. Was just an example of what we can include in the letter. We don't have to include all that. All we could include is a letter to. Santa Clara County to thank them for their partnership, request additional COVID vaccinations or vaccination sites. And county supportive services, and then the county could go ahead and dictate whatever that is. I would like to have a discussion of all of us, all five of us, which is part of the recommendations. To have a discussion on what do you, as one council member, see that is missing? What is a service gap? And if we could include it in that letter, I think we would be showing our community that we're proactive versus reactive. But to answer your question, the recommendation is before you to just write a formal letter to Santa Clara County to thank them for their partnership. It's not to thank them for their service, Mayor. It's take thank them to their partnership. Again, request the additional COVID nineteen vaccines and county supportive services to the residents of the city of Milpitas. So it's a very simple letter. This isn't designed, as you could see, I made the memo very clear, very concise, very short. For this reason, because I think it's an opportunity. So if you go back to that slide of the recommendations. Other cities have added more. We can, but we don't have to. We could just add this paragraph, and that could be it.
Okay, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna go to public comment, or throw a public comment here. Public comment. Okay, first up, Voltaire Montzmer.
Okay, I got it. Yeah, for me, it's really the, there's an impending trend. Let's let's set aside any, I don't think there's any negative notes now all around. Isn't, this one is for me, is a full agenda item now all the time. We should have an all-out encouragement. No offense, but the general comfortable feeling, the attitude, the we's, public, private, business, stores, banks. Yeah, we should go for that. Otherwise, we will be out of place, and you will get embarrassed when the bank says, sir, you don't have your mask where. Well, we're covering your nose. In other words, we should all be motivated. Let's let's go. Let's go for the vaccination. Let's get vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next up, Uvish Kumar Metta.
Thank you very much. First of all, greeting to all the council members. What I wanted to mention about is. The COVID nineteen vaccination is to make sure about that the distribution continue to be involved. There are, there is a need of. Mobile site, there is a need. There are, uh, there is a need of, uh, um, a mobile site. There is a need of a drive, uh, drive-throughs. There is a need. There's a need of, uh, home delivery, uh, services from the, from the labs, uh, respective labs from a Blue Shield. Lab port and a quest that provides the services to senior citizen where the vaccinations be available. And be provided to the senior citizen. It is also imperative to make sure that, you know, this distribution supplies be provided. To the, uh, to the city of Milpitas as the county of Santa Clara's jurisdiction. Uh, the project is being handled, uh, by the county of Santa Clara. It is imperative that, you know, this is, uh, this is something, um, this is a must. Uh, a must undergo project. Uh, also, uh, in order to ensure that, you know, such services are being provided by the city of Milpitas. There is a two trillion stimulus package is already in place. Uh, the, uh, the city of Milpitas is supposed to exhaust the, uh, the package in such a way that, you know, those, those. Those be available to the citizens and, uh, and the testing and the vaccinations be provided, including that the phase one and phase two. Uh, to the, all the citizens so that, you know, they can, they can avail the vaccination as well as make sure that, you know, they. Uh, they are continue to maintain the safety, uh, of the, of other citizen as well as, you know, making sure that the vaccination is not. Uh, vaccination is just a prevention, not a cure and continue to maintain and, uh, continue to maintain the, uh, the precautions, you know, uh, for the, for the COVID nineteen.
With time here, with time to spare, thank you very much for the public comments, folks. Uh, I think that's it for the public comments. Thank you very much. I, um, I really appreciate, uh, Councilmember Dominguez's proposal here. Um, you know, it's been agendized, so there has been support for it. Uh, you know, that's really the case. There is support for this. And so I want to make a motion. Um, I, I believe our, uh, mobile, uh, and I'll go to the council member here. You know, the mobile vaccination, uh, uh, testing that has, has been worked on and will be established at the sports center. I think that's a great deal for our little zip code. Um, it only takes five minutes to get from, you know, really to the sports center, being a central location. And it really is a whole operation. I know when I went down to the county fairgrounds. I mean, I was parking, going in the right lane, filling out the paperwork. Waiting for the shot, social distance, and then even the fifteen minute, uh, wait period. Um, you know, all that is staged. And I think that having one central location in Milpitas, the Milpita Sports Center. Um, that would best serve our residents in our little city here. Um, and so, um, I do want to make a motion to, um, just support Councilmember Dominguez's letter. Uh, coming solely from the city manager, Steve McHarris. Uh, he can write the letter, he can sign it himself. Uh, and he could send that a letter of appreciation of the partnership, uh, to our county. I'm okay if it's just Steve on there, the letter. Um, and, and some of these other ideas you have, Councilmember Dominguez. I encourage you to, um, um, uh. Email it over, uh, to the Vice Mayor and myself. Uh, we serve on the city of Milpitas, MUSD Subcommittee. Uh, I think we actually have a meeting, uh, I think Friday it is. And, and that way we can have this discussion with our school district partners to ensure that, uh, they are on board. Uh, with some of these proposals you have. And so there are other channels you can, uh, utilize so that. Uh, we can ensure, um, just extensive partnerships, uh, here in Milpitas. And so that's just my motion. Um, or the pardon me, point order. I'll go to Councilmember Fan.
Um, I can go after, it's fine, it's.
Councilmember Dominguez.
With all due respect, mayor, it would be a brown act. If I email it to you, because we've already had this discussion and you can't have it with more than two. That's why it's being brought before all of us. So we have to make a decision today. That's what the process is. Um, and I wouldn't want to put anybody in a brown act violation. So we can't move it into that kind of segment. So I just don't see the, the harm that there is in the letter, especially where there is no fiscal impact. Uh, we don't have to include Milpitas unified. Or like I said, we could just include the paragraph that's in the, um, that's in the memo. And that would be sufficient enough as well.
Okay, so I'm unclear because, um, I think the letter is one thing and separately is. Your proposal to partner with our school district. And so our city, uh, and, and so that, uh, maybe, um, you can clarify for the public.
Absolutely. I'd be more than happy to clarify for you. Could I please have staff put, um, the recommendation slide for the mayor? Which I believe is probably the third. Um, so this is the rec, this is the recommendations that I have. The first recommendation would have to have a discussion. So at this point, I still haven't heard any other council member give, um, a service gap or identify a service gap in Milpitas. So we don't, we don't need to have the discussion. I just thought it would be a great idea if we had that discussion as the leadership team of the, the city. The second thing is, um, we would, uh, the final recommendation would be. To write a formal letter to Santa Clara County to thank them for their partnership, request additional COVID nineteen vaccinations. We, um, sites, again, they're not named. And county supportive services to the residents in the city of Milpitas. So I'm not clear of, so the slide before this, maybe it could get you confused, which I could see if staff does the slide, the slide before. So this is a council discussion as it's titled. Um, what do you want to see in this letter for Santa Clara County? So these are just examples of things that I thought would be a good idea to include in the letter. But staff, could you go ahead and show the next slide, the final slide where it says the recommendations? But as you could tell from this slide, the recommendation would just frankly be to direct staff to write a formal letter to Santa Clara County. To thank them for their partnership, request additional COVID nineteen vaccinations and so, and county supportive services to our residents. Does that help? Clear up any misunderstanding or is there anything that I, that I can maybe clarify for you, mayor? Or does this help?
Thank you so much. Thank you. And so I guess I'll, I'll look to do a friendly amendment. Um, it really a whole, a whole new motion, which is, uh, write the formal letter, uh, to thank the, the county for their partnership. Um, but I think all the other recommendations, I'm not really looking to support because. Vaccinations are the focus and we have that coming in, uh, coming in hot to Milpitas right now. Uh, the other discussion items you have, I really appreciate, but it doesn't appear, uh, that there are any representatives from. Our places of worship that you mentioned or our school district here tonight. And so I, I'm not really sure, um. Where that partnership is at this moment. Do you have any, uh, letters from them or how do we know? Uh, they're open to opening up their organization to us?
Yeah, absolutely, mayor. Um, because the way that this was agendized, it was the last minute. Um, I know that many of them were in worship and they couldn't attend. I have been told that. You guys have been getting, um, emails either in the past. Um, so definitely I think that it's important for us to have those partnerships. Um, these partnerships have been confirmed with the Office of Supervisor Otto Lee, that they've also received the emails. So I do believe that, um, those partnerships will be there if we extend that hand. Um, I think that as leaders, we need to be very proactive and. If we're not gonna, we haven't made the ask, then that's where I believe the leadership needs to come in and make that ask. So again, the recommendation on the memo, um, as I stated, that last slide was just for ideas. Again, I still haven't heard one member of the council identify any additional ideas or any service gaps. Um, which is okay. It was just some examples that you guys could have, um, to start a discussion. Uh, but we don't have to have a discussion. We could just go straight into the recommendation, which is less than three sentences, um, which. Gives very little, non-specific, but very general ideas that I think is really important. As we have the conversations of equity and access to vaccinations in the nine five zero three fives.
Thank you very much. Let's, uh, go here. Next up, uh, Councilmember Fan.
Uh, I was just got, gonna, uh, address the service gap. Um, I think. Um, loo- looking at, um. S- some of the anecdotal, uh, information that I've been seeing. Um, and I, I don't know if there's, um, actually data to, uh, that, uh, points to correlation, but, um, I think. Um, the availability of, uh, material in, uh, different languages. Uh, reaching out to communities that don't actually speak English as their primary language. I think that plays a huge role and I, I don't know if, um. Necessarily what the county is doing for that community. Uh, or I'm sorry, the, um, all these different communities, um. In Milpitas. I know that oftentimes that there will be, um, a, a push to get information now. Uh, for example, um, in, in Spanish or Vietnamese, um. But oftentimes, um, that push, it is centralized in San Jose. And I, I get why, you know, San Jose being the largest, uh, city in the county. But, you know, I, I want to know if that's something that is also, um. You know, being, um, prioritized for the smaller cities like, uh, ourselves. So that, that, that's something that I, I would like to inquire a little bit more. Um, and then in terms of, um, what else, uh, to include in the letter, I, um. Right now. A lot of the county services, um, for, or rather, a lot of the services. Uh, related to, um, COVID, related to COVID vaccines and, and testing. Um, it's being packaged together as a county program and I get why. Um, but, you know, I, I'd like to see, uh. A, an actual partnership. So what I mean by that is, um, you know, that there are probably a, a number of ways that the city can. Support the county in their efforts, um, so that it doesn't have to be all the county. And, you know, we, we have a TV station, for example. Uh, w- we have a presence on social media, pushes out information, you know. Let's see if, um, there are ways that we can support the county. Um, and that way we can realize a lot of, um. The services coming, uh, to fruition, targeting, uh, Milpitas, cause it's. I think it's, um, it could be one of those situations where if you're not putting in, you know, the, the partnership, the, the. Services, the, uh, staffing, um, then it's kind of hard to justify why, you know. Your city should be prioritized over all these other, um, jurisdictions. So those would just be my, um. Notes.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Fan. Keep going down the queue here. Next up, Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Chan. I raise my hand, uh, my virtual hand to second your motion.
Okay, great. All right, no further, uh, virtual raised hands. And so I'll repeat my motion for the record. Um, this motion is to direct the city manager on his letterhead, uh, and solely the city manager. To write a letter of, uh, thanks and just everything related to thanks. Um, for the partnership with the new, uh. Mobile vaccination site at the Milpita Sports Center. I mean, that's it. That's everything we need. Um, you know, and, and primarily, um, and, you know, once, I think. And that's the motion. And so just a couple of comments here. I think, once our COVID testing kind of ramped down. Uh, we knew that the vaccinations were going to ramp up. So here we are today and I'm thankful. So I, I'll make the motion. As I've stated multiple times, and we have a second by Councilmember Chua. Um, all in favor of virtual call, Councilmember Fan.
Uh, does this include my remarks or?
In the, is this for the letter or I, I thought you're, you sound like remarks, not any requests. If you can, um, maybe repeat your request. I didn't.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, so, uh, just, uh, two things ma- mainly, one, um. Uh, to address the language disparity. Um, to inquire like what the county is doing about that and if they have plans to, um. A- address that in Milpitas specifically. And then two, um. Is really, how can we add to the, uh, partnership?
Okay, yeah, yeah, definitely. You know what? I like that. You know, how can we add? Um, you know, I think we've all been watching the county department of public health and their communication strategy. Um, billboards and things, right? You, you know, that are out there throughout this pandemic. So definitely, let's put that in the letter. Um, you know, how can we contribute more, um, in the areas of representing and advocating for the underrepresented? And let me go to the Vice Mayor now.
Thank you, mayor. So, um, as you're aware, the ambassador program is every Saturday and our city manager attends that meeting. And I've been attending those meetings as well. And the request that Anthony is making, they already do that, uh, at workshops. Uh, the county is working really, really. I mean, they do, uh, you, you can ask the city manager to, um, give a, an update, because he attends every single meeting.
No, I, I, I understand that they already do it.
Yeah.
But in Mil- Milpitas specifically, because a lot of the efforts like, um, target mainly San Jose.
Well, since we're doing that, maybe our city can, uh, since we're, uh, having it and maybe our city can do that. I'm pretty sure they do it in Milpitas too. If, if the county is doing it, for the city of Milpitas, I'm pretty sure they're doing it. Um, you can ask, we, so city manager, uh, can you have, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, I'm sure we are, uh, you know, what efforts are we taking? Maybe that falls on our shoulders, huh?
Yeah, and then I also wanted to mention that mo- the county is, uh, focusing on East San Jose. Because that's where mostly they're the highest, the Latino population is. You know, there's only so many vaccines and, and that's where their priority is, East San Jose and Gilroy. Uh, because a lot of the Latin, it's affecting a lot of the Latino community in, uh, exorbitant ways. And that's why they're focusing on that. And I, and I think a, a while back, I think you can remind, if you recall, uh, Steve. Uh, the chair was a little bit upset when people started writing letters wanting backs. This was, uh, I think last month or two, two months ago. So I would just be very careful how, um, you know, eh, how, how that the, a letter is drafted. And I do like the mayor's recommendation is, uh, the thank you, uh, because that's, that is a big deal that it's, they're doing one already here in Milpitas. Just make those comments. Thank you.
Okay, comments, comments. Okay, I'm gonna keep going with the virtual raised hands here in the queue. Next up, Councilmember Dominguez.
I believe Councilmember Fan's hand was up first, so I'll go ahead and allow him to go first. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I'm just, I think we're all looking at the same queue. So. Uh, if you're virtual raised hand, are you complete with your request? Please lower your virtual raised hand. Thank you, Councilmember Fan.
Yeah, so, um. That, that's literally what I said, that a lot of the, uh, efforts, um, were in San Jose and. Last I checked, with all due respect, we're Milpitas council members, not, uh, Gilroy or, or San Jose, you know, uh. I, I don't think it hurts to just ask, you know, what they're doing about language disparities, because it exists. It undoubtedly exists. So, so my, my request stands.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with Councilmember Fan on this one. It's just a simple. What, what more can we do? You know, there, there's really always more we can do. And, and I think that's what I'm hearing from Councilmember Fan and. I agree with that. There, you know, there's, what more can we do? And what more can we do? So. It's, it's in the letter. What more can we do? Let us know, county. Thank you for helping us. We're a great city. We're gonna make sure it happens. And so.
Uh, the second.
All right, so we have it there. Okay, all right, all right. Um, and that's my motion.
The second agrees with the amendment.
We have the second and all in favor of virtual roll call, Councilmember Fan.
Hi.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Hi.
Councilmember Chua.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Montano.
Hi.
Myself is an I. The motion is carried and that's it for item number twenty-nine. I'm really looking forward to the new mobile vaccination site here in Milpitas. I'm really looking forward to the new mobile vaccination site here in Milpitas. Okay, moving on, item number twenty-five, under community development, receive report on Bay Street revitalization and provide direction to staff on both a short-term approach and a long-term strategy, uh, strategy, pardon me, uh, what a pivotal moment. And we have our Assistant City Manager, Ashwini Cantak.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Excited to be here to talk about this topic today. Um, if we can go to the next slide, please. Um, so just uh walk you through quickly the agenda. We'll talk about uh the proposal from the Vice Mayor and Council Direction on this item uh previously, and then also a short-term approach and long-term strategy, fiscal impact, and some next steps depending on what we hear back from Council today. Next slide, please. So again, this this was an item that was brought forward by Vice Mayor Montano. And at the March sixteenth meeting, Council had asked staff to basically work with the Vice Mayor and bring back some additional information for Council consideration. And so the city manager and myself, we met with the Vice Mayor on April twelve. And based on that discussion, we're providing you some additional information for your consideration and input. And we also have staff from Public Works, Community Services, Economic Development Planning and Engineering available for questions. As you can see, a lot of what we'll talk about spans work across multiple departments. And again, this is our initial sort of preliminary information for you, uh, and back to uh, you know, be refining it more if there is a desire to move forward. Also, because there was some interest in having something in place by the winter holidays, and then there's also a longer-term planning project for this area that's already envisioned. We've broken down the key elements and activities into a short-term approach as well as a long-term strategy. In the short-term approach, we were in completing planning and implementation by November of this year in advance of the winter holidays. And for the long-term strategy, we would um, we're thinking we'd be completing the Milpitas Gateway Main Street specific plan process by summer of next year. And then the implementation timelines, as you will see, will vary depending on the the type of element or activity we're talking about. Uh, next slide, please. So this is an aerial map showing you the area we're discussing today. Basically, three blocks of Main Street from Weller Lane to Corning Avenue. Next slide, please. Um, so it's not very easy to read, but here's the uh kind of map showing the three blocks. And we divided it up into two sections based on existing infrastructure. The section one covers the area from Weller to the Milpitas Library Way that goes into the parking garage. Then that's indicated by the blue dash line. And then section two covers the area from uh Milpitas Library Way to Corning Avenue, indicated by the yellow dash line. And then you can see kind of a red circle uh that indicates potential location for activities such as an ice rink, food trucks, and live music. Uh, next slide, please. And so now these next few slides kind of outline the key elements and activities in both sections in the short term. And uh potential costs and funding sources have also been noted for the short-term approach elements. Uh, we've not done that for the long term. Um, and these are, of course, very high-level estimate. Um, so um, you know, this is just for kind of initial council feedback. So as you can see, I'll just walk briefly through some of the elements, and these were all noted in Vice Mayor Montano's um memo. There's a couple of items that we've added or that we still have to get through, but for the most part, it's pretty comprehensive of the elements that Vice Mayor had talked about. So uh banners on decorative light poles. And again, you can see the two sections. So there are already decorative light poles uh on Weller Lane to Milpitas Library. And so we will require some hardware repair in that section as well as the streetlight poles. And so we have kind of an estimate of seven thousand dollars for this work for both the repair of the hardware as well as new banners. And this will give us a good opportunity to kind of roll out uh whatever we uh get Council direction on on branding effort, which we hope to bring to you uh on May fourth. Again, the decorative lights, they already exist in section one of this area. Uh, tree lights, we look at sort of existing infrastructure again in that section one piece from Weller to uh the library, Milpitas Library Way. There's some lighting and um as well as electrical infrastructure. Um, so we have the four palm trees that have some uh infrastructure already there. And then we also have street trees that have outlets. So that'd be something that easier to do, be much more difficult than the rest of the and we'll talk about that in the long-term strategy. We have an estimate of about fifteen thousand dollars, and we've kind of noted uh potential funding sources as well. So for both of these, general fund. Uh, for murals, uh, we got direction, the last look into a new mural program and to bring something back within three months to Council. And so we're thinking we could incorporate that into a potential mural program if that was uh approved by Council. Uh, we could tap the public art funds for for this, and we we've estimated about seven thousand dollars for that. Also temporary art installations and sidewalk art. So again, this would be a new program and maybe a community activity to draw people um to this area, and uh we could also access the public art fund for this purpose. Next slide, please. Uh, music, uh, the Vice Mayor had talked about uh kind of because we'll look at the long-term approach, but the short-term uh what we were thinking of could be live music uh just during the holidays. So um opening night and then live music in the area I talk, show, talked about uh near Windsor. Um, and again, you know, an estimate of eight thousand dollars. The ice rink, which is uh a pretty big um kind of item that we'd have to look into and, you know, are looking for council feedback on this. This is a temporary grant that parking lot that the city owns under the, under the two thirty-seven overpass. It would need to be coordinated with the adjacent business. Uh, we've uh had some preliminary conversations with ice rink operators, and it's about in the fifty thousand dollar range. Uh, may be able to negotiate something differently depending on the timeframe. It is a large uh and we've noted some potential funding sources could be maybe offset by the general fund and maybe we can look for some um food trucks again. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, community holiday trees. This wasn't in the original memo, but we did discuss this with the Vice Mayor. There used to be a similar program uh a few years ago, and so maybe this is something that could again attract people. It would be sponsored by local businesses and nonprofits. Uh, facade improvements, we already have fifty thousand dollars budgeted for this from the community benefit fund. This is something that's been approved by Council earlier. And our economic development staff has already been in discussion uh with some potential uh sites and property owners uh who noted some of them uh in here, Red Chili's, Best Sandwiches, Nika, Tequila Shots, and staff has met with an architect on some preliminary discussion on this. Um, street trees, we kind of identified the missing street trees, and uh this is something that's already budgeted as part of a CIP project. And then we've included kind of a miscellaneous li- line item for uh any associated advertising, security, and onsite supervision, which um, you know, again, we are estimating a high-level estimate of twenty thousand. Um, and again, this is towards the short-term, looking at something that would attract uh immunity during the winter holidays. Uh, next slide, please. And so now the elements of uh the long-term approach, many of them are similar, and so I won't go through each one of them. I just wanted to note some differences. So on the banners, we talked about maybe could continue the program but potentially change banners through the year. On the decorative light, as I mentioned, we we don't have anything in place um in us, in the two-block section. And this would be, this would require CIP projects, two projects actually, one to underground the utilities and then one to install the lights at an approximate cost of six point five million. Uh, tree lights, again, we we were just looking at maybe during the winter holidays, if Council wanted to look at something longer term and um, you know, have some infrastructure built in for the rest of the section. That's something we'd look for feedback on. Uh, murals, um, similar to what I talked about in the short-term murals as well as temporary art installations. And these could be for winter holidays. We could also do it for special events uh to activate uh Main Street. Next slide, please. Um, music, as I mentioned, we could look at mounted speakers and the longer-term strategy. Nothing different here, similar to what I talked about in the short-term facade improvements. We are envisioning continuing the program on an annual basis and kind of working with different property owners. So these are the three elements in the long-term approach that we didn't talk about in the short term. So looking at a far, maybe a potential farmer's market in the future. Right now, it's a little bit of a challenge to get them to come to this side, but we'll continue those discussions. And again, if Main Street is activated more, there may be more incentive for them to want to locate here. Historical signage and markers. We do have uh some signage in place, but um, it's not in very good shape. It's severely aged, not consistent. So we would want to have some kind of policy guidance on this. And then it'll have to be a future CIP project. And then the Vice Mayor had also talked about a museum. That is again, something we would need more guidance on. We would uh, we could include some of uh, you know, discussion in the specific plan process. Uh, but obviously would need funding and would be a future CIP project. Uh, next slide, please. And these are some potential funding sources in the short term. As you can see, a community benefit fund for the facade improvement program, general fund, and the general government CIP. Um, also looking at partnerships and sponsorships from local businesses and nonprofits. And then, as I mentioned, the public art fund for the mural program as well as the art installations, and then potentially recreation fees depending on what activities we have. In the longer term, we are thinking that we'd want to explore uh more sustainable funding sources like uh a business improvement district, and then also looking at uh impact fees uh which we would kind of work through the the specific plan process. And then uh look at grants as well for place making. There are a few place making grants that become available through the year. So uh we we'd be targeting those as well. Uh, next slide, please. And so these are the total costs that we've estimated, again, with the caveat that these are pretty high-level estimates. Uh, so total cost for short-term, a hundred and sixty-five thousand, of which fifty thousand's already, as I mentioned, budgeted from the community benefit fund. We could uh use about twelve thousand five hundred from the public art fund, which has uh close to a million dollars in available funding. Of course, there's many other projects that uh could be considered for that, so we wouldn't want to take a large portion of that. Uh, we have twenty-five hundred uh for street trees. It's budgeted as a CIP project. So we're thinking an additional hundred thousand dollars would be needed for the, from the general fund. Obviously, a large chunk of it has to do with the ice rink. Um, it could be partially offset, as I mentioned, by fees and sponsorships, a potential uh revenue sharing agreement with ice rink operators, but we're not um, not totally clear on that, how much we could negotiate. We could also uh divert up to twenty-two thousand dollars in funding for the holiday, from the holiday event at City Hall, if that's a direction uh Council wishes to go in. Uh, if we do get um, you know, uh, your approval to move forward on one or more elements, what, we would need to kind of refine our estimates, and we would need to bring forward a budget adjustment to the proposed budget. Um, depending on kind of what we hear today, we may not have enough time to incorporate it for the May uh for the proposed budget that will be released on May third, but we can bring back some discussion after the May eleven budget study session and in time for the adoption of the budget. It would obviously require, if we're talking about additional funding, it would require us to look at other sources uh to balance the budget and could be use of reserves, decreasing some of the expenditures or increasing revenues if new estimates are available. And then, as I mentioned, for the long-term strategy, that's something that we will determine through the Milpitas uh Gateway Main Street's specific plan uh planning process as well as our future CIP discussions. Next slide, please. So again, some next steps, um, really looking for some feedback on this. This is a very uh preliminary discussion item. Uh, so we've kind of laid out the best of our understanding and based on discussions with the Vice Mayor, what we think uh Council may be looking for and looking forward to hearing input uh and feedback from you on this. So um, next slide. And here's our recommendation. So with that, um, again, as you can see, these elements cover a lot of different departments and their work. So we have staff available for more questions on any of these specific uh elements or activities. With that, I'll um stop the presentation and happy to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ashwini, for all the information. Let's go to public comment. First up, we have uh from the Arts Commission, uh John Ag.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations, Vice Mayor, for coming up with this suggestion. And um, I fully support it. I I I would like to suggest that Gateway Main Street's specific plan and its development is the integral part of the success for the next ten years uh for our city. It's a linkage with the uh metro area, and it could be um one of our strongest fortunes as as time passes. Um, I'm, I unfortunately, or should I say fortunately, the city manager uh stole my thunder, because I was going to suggest that we involve the community in this and as a series of three uh conversations with the community, I think is very important. And it is the community that has to be involved. This cannot be totally run and organized by the city. You've got to have uh the local people. We've got to encourage and uh really show off our huge diversity, cultural diversity, arts and cultural diversity in the city. And we also have to really honor the heritage of Main Street. So uh, I'm well behind this, and I hope that I I will get a chance to be involved in it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ag. Next up, we have Voltaire Montemayor.
Okay, I've on the bottom. Yeah, uh, I don't know, should I say I'm biased? I I am there almost a few hours a day uh somewhere. And uh, yeah, uh, it's a treasure place. Um, we we didn't mention the the Avat Park. Um, we didn't mention the passing roads, Great Mall, Library, and all the branching roads there. In other words, is there's, yeah, if we could improve that, when it will be like, I don't know, uh, to mention, it will be like uh people walking in a city of Tokyo, should I mention, sorry, I do, I I'm I'm not particular to only only one thing. But anyway, it is a dream. Uh, for me, I like developing uh uh Main Street. It's Main Street all over the world, all over the nation, uh, Main Streets, and it's popular. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Montemayor. And and you know what? You're right. Tokyo is a beautiful city. And um, they put a lot of attention into every street, so um, I get your point. Next up, Ervish Kumor Mitter.
Thank you very much. First of all, uh, I want to mention about uh the revitalization and as well as the renovation plan uh for the city of Milpitas. Uh, that includes uh significant changes, including the making the, making the museum way uh ma- uh making the library way to the museum, museum to the library way, as well as uh making sure about that, you know, what other historical changes, significance, banners uh that will be included in the city of Milpitas, no matter what. Uh, these items are required to be included in the, in the four development plans of the city. First is the capital improvement plan. Second is the general master plan update. Third is the metro uh metro development plan, which is a task. And fourth is the science innovation technology plan, master plan. And fourth is the science innovation technology plan, master plan that is, you know, being implemented for city of Milpitas. It is imperative to know that, that the funds, which is being, which is being contributed to works, a work that is being carried out, that has to be co-aligned with the different commissions. For example, the Arts Commission is supposed to be aware about that, what are the changes specific to the arts that are being made to the city of Milpitas? Along with that, what is the funding and the grant that's being allotted? Another, another point that I want to note is that with the changes that is being, the, the, with the changes that is being advised and the recommended over here as a part of a general implement plan, it has to be, there has to be oversight, general fund oversight committee that was required to be formed such that the city of Milpitas and the committee continue to maintain, maintain the monetarization of the fund within the city of Milpitas. And also, city of Milpitas is supposed to consider redistricting commission as well to implement as well, such that, you know, they continue to monetize what other changes being made to this city of Milpitas.
All right, time's up. Okay, great. That's it for public comment. We'll go to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Ashwini, for a great presentation. You know, you captured the essence of what the vision is. You know, Old Town Main Street is a gem. It's, it's been there for, since the nineteen, eighteen, late eighteen hundreds. It was the main street of the city. It was the heart, the heartbeat. And I think that's what Renee captured it as the, the heartbeat of the city of Milpitas. The whole purpose is to revitalize Main Street. You know, when you think about revitalization, it's when something is dead, you're trying to revive it. And Main Street, it, it has so much soul, you know, integrity, historic integrity. And, and I feel that this is the city council that can bring it back to life. Because, you know, previous councils have always said, oh yeah, they're going to revitalize. And I'm pretty sure you, you guys have heard it, they go, you're going to fix up Main Street. But no one has done it, no, no city council has done it. And I, I feel that with this team, you guys could be the ones to bring it back to life. I know that there are, and what I love about this is you have the short term, which is more doable because it's not as expensive. Then you have the long term, which, you know, is we, we, we have to be realistic. It, it costs money. And if you notice, I don't have the EDC Economic Development Corporation in there anymore. I, I'd wanted that to be, so we can have a stream of revenue coming in so we can fund these projects. But, you know, but in the reality is you have to have someone to manage it. And that's, you know, that, and that takes fun, money. And so that old saying, you know, if you, to make money, you have to have money. So, so I think that we could really do so much good for the community. The other thing that it would be really nice is to have Christmas there, Christmas on Main Street. I don't really particularly want to do away with the tree lighting ceremony and at City Hall. I think that's, that's a tradition that we need to keep. But if you notice, once we do the tree lighting ceremony events, then after that, that's it. There's nothing else for the community to do. So after that, then have events like the ice skate, ice skating rink for the kids, have food trucks there. Because when you think about it, Milpitas doesn't really have that many places for the families to go to. And I really feel that this would be our opportunity to make sure that we have economic development in, in the area, revitalize it. So I think we could do it. And thank you so much, staff, for making a great presentation. I think, I think you hit it, you hit it right on the nail, hit the nail on the head. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. If I could follow up with you about the presentation. You know, I'm in support of the item that I will say, in its entirety, I'm not too sure. You know, I really like the short term ideas, but I feel like every idea should be long term. You know, if we're going to go in there and do something short term, it's going to go away and another council is going to have to revive it. And so I would really like to see everything, all the proposals within the item to be long term, permanent. I would hate to put funding into any of these proposals with an item and to see it not be a permanent fixture. I think, I think Main Street deserves that. Um, let me ask about the ice rink. It certainly sounds like a seasonal project. I, I live near Main Street. I'm not sure where would the ice rink be located exactly.
Could we get the, could we get the presentation up so we can just have the, maybe the aerial map or the next slide? Yes, so Mayor, looking at kind of, I guess you can't see my cursor. Looking at the area under the overpass as well as on Windsor. So sort of that entire area for ice rink, music and food trucks. So the ice rink, maybe we can go to the next slide. Is there a way to zoom, like make the slide bigger, Mike?
So it would be in the cul-de-sac, is that, is that what you said?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah. Okay, that's a little better for me. I just, okay, adjacent there to library almost.
And so that's, that's, you know, the parking lot is something the city owns, but we also share a portion of that parking lot is owned by the restaurant. So we'd have to kind of coordinate that. But we, we thought there was an area for the ice rink on the city property that.
Right. And, and I know the county does have another parking garage next to the clinic as well, possible for use. Yeah, I, I think about what's possible there on Main Street and one word comes to mind. And if we could exit this screen. Yeah, I think one word comes to mind. It's adobo. Yeah, adobo. Adobo Festival, two words actually. Yeah, I went to the Adobo Festival one time and they said, come down to Main Street. I said, what? I'll go anywhere for adobo. And then so I went to Main Street and I went to Windsor. And I was astounded. I was astounded by the number of people that were there in that exact same space. It was a lot of people. I mean, it was like a whole concert. They had a stage. You know, the food trucks were there for adobo and other Filipino delicacies. And, and so it does make sense to have that economic kind of development piece there for any type of event. And so I do support some of the things in the item that we're discussing. But I must be honest, I'm not in support of everything, whether it's the trees or the lights or art installations. I'm only really going to be supporting things if they're permanent. I'm not in there for a little pony parade and getting out of there. I mean, you know, if there's going to be art installations, it better be there forever, you know, lights, banners. Yeah, I remember being, you know, I travel to so many cities across our country. And I love traveling to a city, maybe Denver, Colorado, where I'm there, I'm in their historic or downtown area. And I'm driving down the Main Street or whatever they have it called. And I see nothing but spirit, you know, flags draped across the road. I mean, it's a total immersion experience. And, you know, I think that's a low cost way for us to raise the spirit and talk of the town for Main Street. Taking those low cost measures. You know, when you go to other American cities and they have the lights going across the road, very high clearance vehicles. You know, to me, that's a low cost way of brightening up an area that could use it. And spurring economic development for businesses. We do have restaurants on Main Street from end to end. And if we can, as a city on city property, generate, help generate traffic, you know, I'm all for that. Art installations, I think outside of San Jose, my mother lives in San Jose. I like San Jose a lot. My mother lives there. Her birthday is coming up. But, you know, outside of San Jose City Hall, you know, they had those rings. I don't know if you probably saw that, huh? Maybe our city manager drove by at one time. I don't know. But anyhow, you know, they had those rings out there. And, you know, that was something that the city and the community over our neighbor city, they're very proud of that. And it really was a very positive thing for their city. And, you know, I encourage things like that. And, and so I'm not ready to. Well, I think tonight I'll move this item forward, but I will say, you know, you know, you're going to have to appropriate the budget on May eleventh and things. But, you know, I'm not completely a hundred percent for this item, but I will see it move forward. And, you know, if there's another time and place to discuss all the different items, maybe we can go line item because, or I can meet with the Vice Mayor just individually between us, if appropriate. If not, then not. But, you know, I, I want to make sure that we're not buying Christmas lights and then only using them a couple of months of the year is, is pretty much what I'm saying. I want to do some permanent things for Main Street. And, and I think with this agenda item, we can do it. And I think the Vice Mayor has a great point. And I do want to look at the costs again. I'm not done looking at them. But for tonight, I'll support this item. And I'll talk to the city manager, whoever, assistant city manager, whomever, I need to appropriately to the right channel to make sure things are, I think, to my level of expectation if I'm going to support. So, thank you. I'll look for any of my colleagues here if anything further comment. Again, I am not approving this item in terms of the fiscal impact tonight, but I will support it to move forward. Just need to put some time into it. Okay, next up, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So maybe we should go down the line on these or do you want to, just you and I go through this?
Yeah, I mean, I have my concerns and so I, I, yeah, it's, 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 it's more complicated than just going down the line items. So, you know, I'll, I'll follow up with you appropriately.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you mentioned that you wanted more permanent. So we, with the decorative lights, you know, have the, the white light string of lights around the trees. I think that's, I have proposed solar lighting, so we won't have to do the, the, you know, the actual PG&E. So if staff can look into that instead of, because that's what's going to, that's more expensive when you do the actual electrical. So solar lighting and, and it, it would be permanent because it's solar lighting. So I'd like to add that.
We do have to take, I want to take a look at the trees as well, you know.
Yeah, there's.
I know it's some of the, the health of some of the trees, the trees are diminishing.
Yeah.
These streets, so that, that's another key.
Yeah, yeah, they did, they did mention that some, some trees need to be replaced.
So I will follow up. Maybe we'll take a drive down there, you know.
Yeah, but, but I think overall the project is good, the, the details, yeah. But it's, it's, I think it's a, you know, we used to have frontier days there and we used to have a parade. I mean, I think it's, it's time to revitalize Old Main Street.
It is, it is time, it is time. Yeah, great. All right, next up here, Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Chan. I, I just want to say thank you to Assistant City Manager, Ashwini. I could see that you put a lot of thought into this. And I know you work with different departments. It's really good, it's really good first draft. It's, I, I think I've said twice, thank yous to you tonight, so that's a plus. But I do agree with Mayor that if we have to spend money, it has to be permanent. And I agree with that. And, and the short, we can do a short and long term plans. The short term will include the long term, if I'm kind of clear on that.
Right, yeah, you are.
You, you, I, I think that's, that's, I, I agree with what you said, Mayor. And also my other concern, which is a big one, is the ice rink. I don't know for the short term if it's, it's doable for us to even entertain that. So those are my concerns, but overall, thank you so much. And thank you Vice Mayor for bringing this up. And thank you again, Assistant Manager Cantak for a very good, well-planned methodology. So thanks.
Great, fantastic. So before we go to the next council member with their virtual raised hand, you know, I think direction tonight will be move the item forward and have the Vice Mayor work with our Assistant City Manager, as well as myself, if it's appropriate, to bring back another version of this for the next opportunity. Okay, next up here, council member, Dominguez.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for the time and great job, Vice Mayor. This is a great memo. Ashwini, you did an amazing job. You could tell you put a lot of work into this. And I really do appreciate all the time that you spent. It's definitely clear, the objectives are there, everything matches. And so I could tell that you worked a lot on it. So thank you for that. I definitely agree with Councilmember Chua and the Mayor that if we're going to be investing money, it should be for a sustainable plan, especially for Main Street. And so with that, I am with the understanding today that it's not, we are not allocating any money. So I just want to be confirmed that. So today, we will not be allocating any funds, correct, Vice Mayor or staff? Not sure who could answer that.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so as long as we're not spending any money because we are in the middle of a pandemic. And although these are, these are great ideas, it's the bells and whistles that unfortunately are not going to help directly the lives that we need to save. But I think it's definitely a great plan for economic development, I think. But again, I do agree that we need to have a sustainable plan. And so I will be supporting it for that reason, but I definitely want to be very mindful that on those budget items, when we have those discussions in May. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to acknowledge it was, it was a big team effort. So I just want to acknowledge all of the department heads that worked with me on this.
Thank you, team. You guys did an amazing job, like all.
Fantastic. All right, next with the virtual raised hand, Vice Mayor Montana. I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the staff. I know that the, the departments all work together, the Parks and Recreation, Renee and Tonya with the Public Works, Planning, and then with the Economic Development Department. It's amazing how you got, you were able to get them, get them all together to work for a common, for a common goal, you know. And I'm, I'm really proud of you staff for doing that. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. I'll make the motion to move item number twenty five. To the next available meeting, the city manager will figure it out along with the Assistant City Manager. We have a second by Councilmember Dominguez, all the favor virtual book.
Hi.
Councilor Dominguez, Councilor Chua.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Montana.
Hi.
Myself as an I, the motion is carried, twenty five is good to go. Moving on. Let's talk about some art, twenty six, item number twenty six. Approve Amanda Lynn Design Proposal for the Montague Pedestrian Overcrossing, AKA The Rainbow, Public Art Selection and Appropriation from the Public Art Fund to Public Arts Project, Capital Project thirty forty nine. And on our agenda here, we have our Director of Recreation Services, Renee Lorenzen.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers again. Renee Lorenzen, Director of Recreation Community Services. I am here tonight to introduce Tegan McLean, our Community Engagement and Inclusion Administrator. She is the Staff Leader, is on to the Arts Commission and the Public Art Manager. And she will be going through this quick but presentation tonight on murals, Montague, over crossing. So with that, I will turn it over to Tegan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm really happy to be here tonight to bring you this recommendation for approval for a public. For approval for a public art selection for the Montague pedestrian over crossing. This year you approved a work plan for the Arts Commission that included a selection of artwork um, for this project. And um. Of course, everybody knows the piece that we're the. Area that we're talking about is the pedestrian bridge that. Um, connects the Milpitas Transit Center and Bart Station to the south of Montague with um, the residential and retail developments to the north. We're um, talking about a mural that would be painted on the street level at the base of the staircase structure opposite the Edge Apartments. And in November, the Commission approved a design parameter for this, um, including limiting it to um, Bay Area artists. And they recommended a commission of fifteen thousand dollars for this project. The call for artists was released in December and publicized to Bay Area muralists. We had nine proposals received and eight of those met the proposal criteria. Next slide, please. In January, the Arts Commission reviewed all the submissions and selected four finalists. They requested that staff conduct community outreach to get feedback on the designs. And because this is a pandemic, we had to do that virtually through a virtual survey. We published um, information about it on social media, email, city managers newsletter. And we also reached out to the managers of the Edge Apartments, which is adjacent to the site and requested that the survey be shared with residents. We had a total of ninety one people cast votes and provide comments on this. And next slide, please. The Arts Commission reconvened in February to review the feedback. However, the Commission was unable to arrive at a consensus. They had a motion to approve a design by Orlu Arts and that resulted in a split decision two for, two against. The Commission all agreed that all three designs had merit and all three artists are qualified, so I'm tonight going to share with you. Those three design concepts. Next slide, please. The artist for this one, Amanda Lynn, is a Sonoma County based artist who has painted more than thirty six murals. Her Bay Area work includes pieces at the Yerba Buena Center for the Arts, Minna Alley and Mission Burnout, all in San Francisco. And she's also painted commissions internationally. Her um, work is colorful and realistic images of flora and fauna, sometimes with a female face or figure incorporated. Her concept for Milpitas is a collage of Bay Area wildflowers, plants, animals, insects and birds. And she's indicated a willingness to add any specific species that Milpitas might request and or a face or figure if that were desired. Next slide, please. Olivia Losi Unger, who paints as Orlu Arts, has designed five murals. Uh, as a designer and served an assistant painter on eighteen murals, mostly in the Philadelphia area. She recently relocated to San Francisco. Orlu Arts specializes in a parachute cloth mural technique, which is popular on the East Coast. Where the design is painted on parachute cloth and then. In the controlled environment of studio, they are able to get very detailed paintings and then triple seal it to a surface. Her concept for Milpitas uses the native Moekma Aloney pattern as a backdrop. To vintage illustrations of native birds and flowers. With the whole work painted in colors that are reminiscent of a stained glass window. Next slide, please. Brian Peterson is also from Sonoma, has ten years of wide ranging design and fabrication experience. He's worked in wood, metal, computer graphics, videography and automotive design. He's done commissioned murals for the cities of Petaluma, Mill Valley and Nevada. As well as Lagunitas Brewing Company. And he designed the World Cup trophies and um, a Lamborghini art car. His concept is a colorful abstract inspired by Milpitas history, high tech architecture and nature. The vortex design represents diversity coming together and then fanning out in different directions, much like the passengers on Bart. He's incorporated design elements, including the Ford logo and Aloney imagery into the abstract design. Next slide, please. The public was invited to rank the finalist designs and what you see on the screen. Is the vote count and a mathematically generated score based on the points assigned in the ranked voting. Amanda Lynn's choice, Amanda Lynn's de- uh, design scored the highest with the public. It was the first choice design for the largest number of people, so that's the first one that you saw. Selected by more than a third of the respondents. And was significantly more popular than the next most popular first choice. It also had the fewest number of least favorite votes. For that reason, staff is recommending Amanda Lynn's design. Next slide, please. This project will require an appropriation of fifteen thousand dollars from the Public Art Fund. They are, there are sufficient funds in the Public Art Fund and that money can only be used on public art projects. Next slide, please. Following City Council's approval of one of these designs, the design will be finalized incorporating any additional requests made by the city. Staff will remain in close contact with the artists during the process. It is very common for artists to make small creative modifications as they work, but anything significant that's proposed. As a change would be brought back to City Council first. We are expecting to have a contract in place with an artist by June and complete the work toward the end of summer, probably around September. Next slide, please. This is just a reminder for you of um, the staff recommendation. Next slide, please. The the recommendation, which I think is written on the next slide. Is approve the Amanda Lynn design proposal for the Montague pedestrian over crossing. And appropriate fifteen thousand dollars from the Public Art Fund to the Public Art Project CIP budget. Thank you. That concludes the staff report and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Tegan, for the presentation. And all your efforts with the Arts Commission. I want to give kudos. To all the Arts Commissioners. We have John Ag with us here tonight. Um, we'll go to the public comment. Uh, if there's any public comment, folks, anybody out there? We do have the chair from the Arts Commission. Um, we'd love to hear your thoughts, but do you see a virtual raised hand up? First up.
Thank you very much uh, to uh. The council. I wanted to mention about the Arts Commission's uh, work. And expansion in the the terms of uh. Uh, of terms of uh, having the uh, having the rendering artist from a Bay Area to. Uh, to provide a comprehensive, a comprehensive plan to to rehabilitize the. Sidewalks as well as the crossbridge within the city of Milpitas. Wanted to mention that, you know, with the health of Arts Commission, this. This can be a founding step uh, for city of Milpitas, as you know, what is required to be implemented and what designs. Uh, what design consistencies are required to be maintained within the city of Milpitas as. Different arts that depicts a different culture, different significance. And as well as the the different aspect and the depict and as well as historical significance. Uh, with the city of Milpitas, but it is also important to ensure that, you know, once the art is being selected. It is being uh. Uh, it is, it is being picked for the city of Milpitas as a part of a comprehensive art plan to develop. That that particular art consistence, art consistency is to be maintained within the specific zoning and the district within the city of Milpitas. As the consistency shows that, you know, what city is required to be developed, what city is to develop as a part of a city development plan. Inconsistency. May create discrepancies and may. Rehabilitize and as well as require a lot of revolution of a city development. So uh, City Council must consider to to prevent from such discrepancies. Of a different art to be developed and also to make sure that, you know, that is being developed as for the. Uh, for the zoning, specific zoning and specific uh, districting of the city.
Next up, we have John Ag.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Uh, it's just a quick, uh, it wasn't mentioned by Tegan, but I should add that. The other two candidates that didn't quite make it in this uh, choice here. Are both very proficient muralists. And I highly suspect that they would be good candidates for future consideration in additional murals. So I just wanted to add that, should they be listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, John. Next up, we have Walter Montamayor.
Thank you. Uh. It will be a tourist attraction, I would say. Uh. So the fifteen grand, oh, thank you. I think that's the best price. Uh, all of Milpitas wish to walk and cross. They will be inspired, as I can see, I. I don't know, I want to mention, are these three Ds or glasses? It's okay, I, the painter, the painter is, I is described as a well known painter or. And the other one that who who didn't make it, but anyway, oh. For me, I was, it will be approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I think that's it for public comment tonight. I am really excited about this agenda item this evening. Back to the days here. You know, it's like one of the funnest parts of our job. As elected officials in Milpitas is approving art. I mean. I think the last time that I can recall proving an art. Project was over at Dixon Landing Park. And we had a couple of options. And we got to make a choice. And I think that's a pretty cool thing. These are permanent art installations. I um. Have questions tonight. I I'm I'm not enamored by the level of uh, spray. That was done. And 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 I know. No, we really count on our artists in Milpitas Artist Residents to provide their feedback. Just the sample size of the survey. Um. Is limited. And and I think also the results are very competitive. And the. Design for tonight, that that's the leading, I guess, vote getter. I'm I'm not really enamored with. Um, you know, who am I to speak for our Milpitas residents artistic taste, but. You know, I I think we are, we are looking for. It's not an easy decision tonight. I think a chairperson ag from Arts Commission would. Has a really great point. I do serve as a liaison on the Arts Commission. Uh, for the record, and and I I remember seeing. Additional proposal designs that um, were pretty nice. I think one was. With uh, Milpitas history on it, Ford factory workers on it. You know, I thought that one was pretty neat. But I think for tonight. Um, I want to ask, and we'll see where the council goes. You know, I want to ask that more community engagement occurs because. Uh, this project is in a really, really prime location that. Every resident of Milpitas will see at some point or another. And I want to make sure we get this right. Um, through more community engagement. Uh, I'm I'm not ready to make a decision tonight. On uh, which design to go with. It's it's that important. Uh, we're going to have to live with this for quite some time and. You know, I know it's April twentieth, but I think this. Staff recommendation tonight's a little psychic, too, too psychedelic for me. Okay, too psychedelic for me and. Um. But uh, just get more time. There's nothing wrong with that. I don't think we're in a rush. Um, I would love to see more community engagement. And and. And just, you know, more time to think about it, you know. It's art. It's kind of the most important decision almost, so. That's my position tonight. I'm not ready. I hope that we can postpone this item to. Get more input from the community. I could do more on the internet and such. Next up here, Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Chan. Um. Just like you, I'm not, I'm using your word. I'm not enamored. On the recommendation. And I would like to see the four uh, paintings again, recommend, I mean, the four entries. If you will.
Yeah, pull up presentation now. I like the second one for tonight, but I would love to, you know. Take more time.
Yeah, that that doesn't, that this one doesn't spell Milpitas to me. You see what I'm saying? Uh, the next one, please. Um. The next one, please. Next one. And then the next one. Oops.
Some member there's actually.
Don't you have a? Don't you have four?
They had four finalists, council member, but um, in the survey, the um, fourth one did not score well. And um, the Arts Commission did not. Consider that. Uh, advancing to the next level.
I questioned the survey myself because it's less than a hundred people. And also depending on how the, how the questions were structured, it. It's. It's going to vary and.
Yeah.
The results are are. So. I just like Mayor, I'm not ready to make a decision. I would probably ask if. Like the community input and also. And also somehow. When you go to. When you see it, you know it's Milpitas and I don't know how to explain that in art. So that's what, that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilmember Chua. Maybe we can have this come back with all the designs I. You know, and my question is, what's the integrity? Of the survey? Are these registered uh, survey response responses? Or did one of the designers say? Hey, one thousand or one hundred of my friends, I'm going to send you this link. You guys vote for my project. Um, I'm not sure about the survey. Uh. Validity. And and so that's the key, too. What if one of the designers, and I could be wrong, I don't want to. Be a negative here, but uh. I've been a part of a few surveys myself and uh, you know. Go ahead, send your friend that survey and uh. They're going to vote for their favorite fire engine, you know, but uh. Okay, if you're, uh, you don't need your virtual raised hand. Um, please lower it. Next up here, Councilmember Dominguez.
Very much, Mayor. Um. I also have a little not too excited about them. And I don't, I don't mean, I'm like with Councilmember Chu, I don't, I I'm not an expert in art and I. I, but I look at, um, if I'm going to be driving and if I wasn't from here. If I would look at that. Would I get the same feeling like when I look at Chicano Park in LA where I see it, I'm like, oh, that's where Chicano Park is at? Um. I don't. And so I think that is. My concern, um, where I would like the community's input to see which one is it that. They would like. Um, and I definitely appreciate the work that the Commission um, has done on this. Uh, but again, I think for me, um. I would like to feel a little bit more connection with that pedestrian. Um, just like I did feel connection when I saw the the bridge come through, right? The rainbow that I did feel some connection like, oh, that's awesome. But with this, I I I'm not getting that. And so I just would like to have more community input. Um, as some, a one member, I I do love to hear what the community has to say. This is going to be something. Um, that's going to be here for for a while and um, I definitely want to make sure that we are doing our outreach and our due diligence. Um, especially since it was such a split vote on the Commission's. Um, another thing. It would be interesting to see their feedback. Um, I would love to know what the Commissioners felt. Like their own expressive, I I I mean, there's only a couple of us on this call, but I could already hear the the same sentiment with three of us. So it'll be interesting to see like what what did the Commissioners feel when they saw this? Um, and I'm not, I don't sit in that group. But it would be interesting to see if there was any feedback back um, on the paintings because again, there's no. I I didn't feel the connection to the painting um, that that really shares that this is Milpitas. Um, so definitely, um, I would put it out for community input. Um, I would want to know what what the Commissioners think. Um, I think that would be important feedback for myself. Um. And it would be good for us to share it with the council. Uh, again, it's, I I don't want to um. Put less credit on the painting. I appreciate it and I just maybe don't appreciate it in the lens of an artist because that's not my expertise. Um, but I just definitely know what I want a commuter commuter. Who's driving through that area to feel as they're coming through one of the main gateways for our city. So thank you so much for the time. And I owe my time for my colleagues.
Thank you very much. Uh, and so if there's no further input, I'm looking for virtual raised hands. Um, my recommendation tonight would be to. Uh, bring this item back at the next regular City Council meeting. And um, for the council to see each design. Uh, the Art Commission was able to see. Uh, and then if there's any public engagement that staff or see through the city manager's office would like to um, conduct. Uh, that would be um. Advantageous to our decision making as well. Uh, Vice Mayor, I see your virtual raised hand. Uh, did you want to?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments that. I too uh. Was not thrilled with these um. I too was not thrilled with these artwork. Granted that, you know, they're, they're beautiful, but it just doesn't reflect the soul of our city. Diversity, the hillsides, the historic aspect, you know, little cornfields. There's just something missing. Beautiful artwork, but it doesn't reflect in my opinion, our city his roots or the essence of our city. So I, I, I too agree with that. And I also wanted to mention, I know that John Ag had, had asked about Main Street that, and I don't know if the Renee, if he, if Renee told him that we have community input for Main Street on the 29th. April 29th. So is that the right date, Renee? For the community input on Main Street?
You caught me off guard on the Main Street feedback, but you know, I know with Ned's group that did go out. Ashwini, did you have your date?
On the 29th, yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah. So for John Ag, that, that's the date for community input. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Maybe ask Tegan before we go to Walter here. Let me ask Tegan, would you happen to have the proposed design for the site there with the one with the Milpitas history? You have that at your fingertips? If not, you could bring that one back?
We could certainly bring that back and show that to you again.
I think that one's pretty, I know that was my favorite. They had the Ford factory workers and cornfields on it. It was it was something special for our history. We'll go to our deputy city manager, Walter Ross.
Thank you, Mayor City Council. I think your feedback tonight is really, really helpful. This really helps to understand what you're looking for. We may need more time with the community inputs. Come back and make forth for that might be difficult. But we can do it in two stages. We can come back first with a fourth design. Get further feedback from you if that's what you desire, and then come back with more feedback from the community. Or we can wait a little bit longer and bring it both together at the same time.
I think we had time. We got to get this right. The art funding, our budget is there. And so I think we'll, we'll take our time on this one. Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I think we're, there's no urgency here. And we're going to get it right together. It's interesting, you know, the last project we approved over at Dixon Landing. We had two options. And for that one too, we went opposed to staff recommendation. So, you know, we're just doing our best because we know our residents uniquely. And so, you know, I think in terms of the art aspects, we've been pretty representative of our community. So this is great work by everybody. And we all have the same goal. So I don't need to make a motion for this item 26. I think we're fine. Staff has feedback and direction to come back. We're not approving anything here. So we'll keep going here to item number 27. Okay, item number 27. Let's discuss, wait a minute. All right, it's the last item, folks. Time check, last item. All right, we're having fun tonight. Item number 27.
We have the two items from consent as well to get to at some point.
Oh, you know. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, you don't have to apologize. I'm looking at you, Vice Mayor. I'm looking at you.
Oh, go ahead. I'll just, I'll just skip those. It was just some.
No, we got to approve them still. So here we go. Item 27, discuss proposed legislative advocacy policy and legislative guiding principles and provide direction to staff. Our assistant city manager, folks, Ashwin, you can't.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening once again, Mayor and Council. I will try to be brief. So we're just going to walk through some background on this and we have a draft advocacy, legislative advocacy policy and legislative guiding principles for you to consider. And we'll talk a little bit about resources and next steps based on your feedback. So next slide, please. So in terms of background for this topic, we do, as you know, have seven council identified priority areas and federal and state legislation and regulations have a very direct impact on all of our policies and initiatives that span these priority areas. And the city currently does not have a legislative advocacy framework or dedicated resources to proactively track proposed legislation. So it makes it challenging for us to provide timely input on proposed legislation that may adversely impact the city's interests. And so that's why we are here today before you to discuss and seek your input on a potential legislative advocacy framework with a draft policy as well as legislative guiding principles. We're not asking for any adoption of this, just getting your feedback and we'll come back. Depending on which direction you'd like to go. So given our current fiscal situation, we are not proposing any additional funding or resources. We will just continue to leverage our existing staff as well as other advocacy groups to the maximum extent possible. But just given the volume of bills that are introduced every year, especially at the state level, and that can really have an impact on our operations and our programs. It may be a good idea in the future to explore some dedicated resources. If we can go to the next slide. So on the legislative advocacy policy, the purpose of the policy is really to establish clear guidelines for advancing the city's goals and positions through the legislative review. And advocacy at all levels, the regional, state and federal levels of government, and then to provide guidance to all of you as well as any staff that may be representing the city on external committees and boards. Next slide, please. So the policy basically outlines guiding principles and a process to enable a comprehensive review. And basically it states that all review shall be made from the perspective of the city and the community as a whole, so not individual perspectives or opinions of either staff or the legislative body. And of course, in alignment with existing city positions, policies and goals. Also states that the city could align with legislative positions of various advocacy organizations that we track, like the Cities Association of Santa Clara County that we're a member of. And then League of California Cities, National League of Cities. But again, these would be on priority bills that benefit the city of Milpitas. And at times, the city's interests may also differ from the positions taken by these entities. The policy envisions annual adoption of the legislative guiding principles by the council. These guiding principles would of course be aligned with approved council priority areas, the adopted general plan, the economic development strategy, as well as other council-approved master plans and strategic plans. And council consideration of these principles would typically occur at the beginning of the calendar year to position us well for the legislative process. Next slide. So the implementation of the policies as outlined in the slide. And again, keeping it pretty simple. So generally, legislation and issues of interest are brought to our attention through several means, from members of the council, the community, various advocacy groups, industry groups, as well as appeals and other cities. And so we're proposing that all legislation or issues of interest will be referred to the city manager's office. Our office will review this proposed legislation and work closely with the city attorney as well as one or more departments as needed. If the proposed legislation clearly aligns with the adopted legislative guiding principles or other council-adopted policies, we are recommending in the interest of time that the mayor sign letter of support or opposition so as to allow for timely action. The city manager could sign a letter if the matter purely pertains to city operations. Any other legislation we would bring for council consideration and action. And that would be if it's not clearly aligning with the principles or if there's a high community interest or could be contentious. We would definitely want to hear from the full council on that. And to ensure that council is kept apprised in a timely manner, we will be sending copies of any letters that are sent out from the mayor or city managers, well as some of your factions. So we'll send those as informational items. And we're also thinking providing a quarterly legislative update to the council to keep you updated. Next slide, please. So here's some draft legislative guiding principles for your consideration. So I'll just kind of quickly read through them. Protect local control. Support efforts to keep Milpitas safe. Effort, support efforts to create affordable housing. Support the city's vision for strategic, sustainable and smart growth. Protect and increase local funding and no unfunded mandates. Pursue or retain federal and state funding for key efforts. Support and promote inclusive communities. Promote livability and environmental stewardship and promote investment in infrastructure. And as you can see, these are pretty high level and quite comprehensive. Of course, at times they could be in conflict with each other. So for example, we support affordable housing, but if that's something that takes away local control or we may support environmental stewardship, but then it may be, you know, basically placing unfunded mandates on us. And those are times when again, we'd want to engage the full council before recommending a position. So if we can go to the next slide. So this slide, as well as the next couple of slides, kind of expand on the nine guiding principles that we talked about. In the interest of time, I won't read through them. They are in your packet. And if there's questions, obviously we can come back to it. So if we can kind of go through the next few slides. Yeah, the next one. And so in terms of resources, again, as I mentioned, just being mindful of the fiscal situation we are in, we're not recommending any additional funding for this effort. We'll continue to work closely with the city attorney and the departments to identify legislation that could have a substantial impact on the city. Will of course continue to support the mayor and council as they represent the city and advocate for the city's interests at the regional level. And again, leverage advocacy groups and industry groups to track and monitor legislation. As I mentioned earlier, in the future, we may want to consider a legislative advocacy consultant. Several other cities do have them, some, some only at the state level, others at state and federal level. And we have had some discussions in our assistant city manager groups at times about wanting to pool resources. So again, in the future, if we wanted to look at this, we could look at a more economical model to have a cost-sharing arrangement for the, for this type of service. Next slide, please. And so in terms of next steps, based on council feedback today, we could bring back a draft policy and guiding principles for adoption. And then in accordance with that policy, we'll work with the mayor on letters of support or opposition for bills that align with the principles while keeping the full council updated. And next slide, please. So with that, again, we're just asking you to receive a report and provide direction to us on this. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ashwini, for your great work. Again, I know you do a lot of projects here for our city. And they happen to be all very meaningful. So I, I, I've heard concerns going back some years about how our city deals with policies coming from higher up. Most recently with the vice mayor, who represents us on the Cities Association. And there's just always a barrage of state policy, in particular that cities are always careful to keep a careful eye on. And so just having this policy and guiding principles. It really is a process that we really need to refine our city government here. So I just, I have nothing but, nothing but to say, but great job and you know, I will be supporting this item to move forward at the direction of the council. Any virtual raised hands? Do you see one? Public comment. Here we go. Who is this? Irish Kumar Metta, go ahead.
Thank you very much, all city council member. I think I wanted to mention about three things. A legislation along with the constitution. A legislation and constitution that goes hand in hand. When we talk about the capital, capital executive commission, the capital executive commission can provide the insight on that, you know, what are the legislative and constitutive policy that is required to be made for the city? The local jurisdiction takes precedence over a lot many jurisdiction in terms of a county, in terms of a state. When any legislative policy or a constitution policy that is being made in conjunction with the state and the federal, the commission which are part of a city, they're being assigned a committee, a committee number, that committee number associated with the federal and state laws. And as well as those laws are applicable to the city in a respective manner, no matter what the candidates, no matter what the candidate with the respective party, whether that is a Democratic, whether that is a Republican, whether that is American independent or the independent American party, no matter what party they are from. Those legislative policies will be applicable to each and every candidate that is providing a vote to the city, vote to the county, vote to the state and vote to the presidential elections. So it is imperative that the legislative and constitutional policies are being built along with the respective commission that is going to be, that is becoming a part of a body of a city of Milpitas. Without this particular legislative policy and the constitution policy which is required to build the constitution as well as a legislative law environment within the city. It will be, it will not just be a lawless, it will be a constitutionless and a legislative less. It is important that you know, such commission be developed and be structured within the city so that policies be made.
Next up, Walter Montemor.
On the button. Yeah, like previous speaker, I'll just follow up. Almost, if not completely illustrated. Expected eventually with a sincere and thorough practice in ourselves or ourselves. Element of time, very good plans, self-sensitivity, eventually very good plans and thoughts to be embodied. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. All right. Back to the city council. Okay, any comments? If none are opposed to the item, I'll make a motion to direct staff to move forward. We have a second by council member Divinhas. All in favor of virtual call, council member Fan.
Hi.
Councilor Divinhas.
Hi.
Councilor Chua.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Montana.
Hi.
And myself is an I. The item is approved. Thank you very much, Ashwini.
Thank you.
Hey, all right, couple more items, folks. Here. Items three and four, we're just going to go straight to the vice mayor here. Item number three, Vice Mayor, please take this.
Thank you. Let me find the, is, okay, so this is adopted resolution to approve project plans and specifications of work to construction contract to Gizmo Art Productions Incorporated Authorized Consulting Services Agreement Amendment Number Four with page. So this is about the Albezo bottom line, about the Albezo Adobe renovations. So one, I just had a quick question for Steve Erickson. So with the, the contractor, what is going to be the historical theme at the Adobe? Is it going to be the Spanish Mexican Rancho period or is it going to be the pioneer period? That's my question.
So we'll get our director of engineering here. There he is, moment, moments, moments momentarily, he's here.
Vice Mayor, thank you for the question. So it's going to be the Adobe period.
Okay, so that's a Spanish Mexican Rancho. Rancho period. Okay, that's all I want to know, which is good, because it is Adobe. So the last, the last one for the.
Well, let's, let's make a motion to adopt.
I, I make a motion to accept.
Okay, we have a motion by the vice mayor for agenda item three as written. I'll second that motion. All in favor of virtual roll call for item number three, councilman Fan.
Hi.
Councilor Divinhas.
Hi.
Councilor Chua.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Montana.
Hi.
Myself is an I and item number three is approved. Looks like we're nearing completion. A lot of phases there for that project. Looking forward to its completion and opening in its entirety. I have number four, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. So for the, oh, he's, he's the contact person, Steve. Okay, so this is on the planning for the McLeanless Park. So I recall when we were discussing this way back, there was supposed to be a soccer field. Is, is there not going to be a soccer field there? Did they change the plans at the previous council?
No, there will be a, a sports field constructed.
Oh, you, oh, you just call it a sports field, but yeah, but it's a soccer field. Okay. And then the dog park. Is there a dog liability? Let's, let's say a dog gets loose and bites Let's let's say um a dog gets loose and bites um a child near the school or even a resident. Uh, what are the liabilities at the city? Does the city have any liabilities on that?
That's an interesting question, I think I would defer to the city attorney on that one.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, um, I think there's a risk with a claim on anything that the city does. Obviously, we are in the deep pockets and so if somebody wanted to file some sort of legal action or seek damages for a loose dog that happened to get out of the dog park. Um, yes, we could see a claim. With that said, uh, you know, most dog parks that we see uh that are set up, they have all the protocols in place. The fences, the multiple fences in terms of letting dogs in and out, there'd be signage up. And so there'd be warnings associated with the dog park, making sure that small children aren't in certain areas. And so the city would do everything within its power to make sure that people are aware of the risk uh and and limitations associated with the dog park. But we are the deep pockets, so if somebody wanted to bring an action, um, we could see that. But we would do everything within our power to make sure that is minimized.
Okay, so um, a- and we, and we have, that's part of the plan to have a dog park there or we have no say so, it's already a dead deal.
Two dog parks there in the design, uh, we've been working on the project here for quite some time, two dog parks. And it's built specification, uh, the same standards as dog parks uh generally accepted, I would say, across the state. Um, and it would not be our first dog parks in Milpitas.
No, we have one up in the at Leven Park or near there, yeah.
Yeah, we know what we're doing, yeah.
All right, so 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 with that, uh, I'll make the motion to accept.
Thank you very much, well, you know, very excited since we're here, um, this is a huge item for tonight. Uh, we all get to be a part of approving this. Um, it's it's just really tremendously valued to the community over there at McCannus as well as our city. Talk about having schools and parks in every neighborhood in Milpitas, well, uh, our newest neighborhood uh with the newest school, have this newest park. And to see it here, um, I'm quite honored to be a part of the vote here. Um, and it's it's a quality park, you look at the fiscal impact, so. Uh, we have a motion by the Vice Mayor, Carmen Montana, to approve item number four as put on the agenda. I'll go ahead and second that motion, all in favor of virtual roll call, Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Councilor Dominguez.
Aye.
Councilor Chua.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Montana.
Aye.
And myself is an I, um, item number four has now been approved. I wanna thank um our Director of Engineering, Steve Erickson, as well as all the folks with, working with the CIP and City Manager's Office, everybody, I mean. That's a pretty cool item, um, so I'm glad we're ending the meeting uh tonight uh with that. And um. With that being said, I wanna thank everybody, our city staff, uh, directors, manager's office, attendees, residents. Thanks for being with us on this April the twentieth. Um, I do wanna adjourn this meeting in memory of George Floyd. And so let us all move forward and and ensure that social justice and equality um is always present. And and we know that um the path to. Um. You know, life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness uh may have some um, um, just. You know, just, it's not a smooth path and so um, tonight I wanna adjourn this meeting in honor of George Floyd. And everybody, please have a great night, get some rest.
Night.